Thank you, I appreciate it. And is this on? S one two. I'm honored to announce our official partnership with Orange County Division. I made that announcement by the last town council meeting for the USC Naval Secretariat. You guys may see I'm here, I'm more on that end and I'm gonna be very quick with this, but I'm gonna introduce our community officer, which is C N S Larry Reinhardt. Larry, come up and tell us a little bit about the secret that program and what it's gonna be doing. And we'll just talk town council with that secret.
Good evening, my name is Larry Reinhardt on the community officer. We are very appreciative to be here. And amazingly enough, we've actually earned 13 prospects in the county. Which is one of the highest recruiting numbers I've seen in quite some time. But anyways, with that being said, we've got 25 cadets in our unit. They all range from 11 years old to 18 years old. Currently, she's one who's getting ready to graduate out. She has three trainings this summer. So one of them is you've gone to natural rescue training, get ready to go do real security, and she's gonna do advanced dieting. So those are just some of the different types of trainings that take place. I think Officer Reinhardt, she will actually go into the National Flyman Academy in Seckola. And then Seaman Reinhardt will actually be going to Washington D.C. for 12 days to be, to do a training with the US Naval Academy and Naval Academy Band. And it will be marched at the fourth of July parade in Washington D.C. So as you can see, the cadets have a wide range of different types of opportunities. So even though we'll be based here in the year, the cadets will actually be able to go travel across the US, including Long and Hawaii or Pico for trainings that take place. So over the weekend, summer, they're doing a C V training along with submarine training. The cadets will actually, you know, they're building their equal counterparts in their submarine service along with doing with the C Vs, actually constructing the submarines. So that's what we teach. It's all about hands-on training, but at the same time, it's about leadership. So each of these cadets actually run the unit, whereas the adults were here to ensure they don't break the bones, actually be on fire. And we actually help facilitate their trainings. However, they actually run the day-to-day operations, which is something we teach them starting at the age of 11 and working their way up. So when they go out into society or join the military, they will actually be able to function way better than the counterparts. So with that being said, appreciate it once again. Thank you very much. The C V's officially start early, August 27th and 28th, and then each month afterwards, the month of May, we take off and check if your trainees stay up. Thank you very much.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, onto public comment. We've got a handful of people signed up. Does anybody want to speak now or for? Martin Collins, super. David Sharp, the fore. Ben Tompkins, the fore. John Hobbie, the fore. Larry Reinhardt. Thank you. Next, we have a special presentation. It's Scott Howard.
Peasance Council, thank you for having me today. My name's Scott Howard. Chief Communications Officer, Orange County Public Schools. Appreciate you having me here today. As a proud parent of a current naval sailor, naval veteran, my daughter just got out of the Navy, exited the Navy, she's a naval nurse. It was nice to see this. Feels like home. Thank you for having me here today. I am here to speak on the One Mill Special Village renewal. I think with your agenda, it says the one penny sales tax, which is actually, it helps me to clarify, the one penny sales tax, which is the transportation tax, which that will begin in the November election. I'm actually here to speak to the continuation of the One Mill Special Village, which was first adopted in 2010. And the board has asked the voters of Orange County to renew it in 2014, 2018. And every, every four years, it's up. And so this year is actually the fourth year, 2022. So I'm gonna start with my presentation, I'll give you a little background on the, on the school district, kind of where we are, enrollment, all of that, and just roll through the presentation. The board adopted a revision in 2019, we're sure every student has a promising, successful future. Their vision says with the support of families and the community, create, enrich, and diverse pathways to the year's students' success. Really, it is about the community. The community's invested in Orange County schools, invested in our students over the last 12 years. They're asking the voters to weigh in again on that issue. And again, I'm here to educate, not to advocate. I will, I will give you some background information, but wanna make sure that our community is aware and doing these presentations is to do that. We're a large organization. We're the third largest employer in Orange County of 24,000 plus employees. And of our employees, 58% of them are teachers, so 14,000 plus teachers. We're the ninth largest school district in the United States, and the fourth largest in Florida, behind Miami-Dade, Broward, and Hillsborough. Miami-Dade is third, Broward is sixth, and Hillsborough is seventh and the fourth and ninth. Our student enrollment in 2010, when the board's first went out for the Special Villages of One Mill, was less than 180,000 students. Today, we're above 206,000 students. In fact, that's the October number. At the end of the year, that's when we do our official count, but at the end of the year, we actually ended with 280,000 students in Orange County. You can see the tracking of enrollment during the recession, how it kind of tailed off, then accelerated post-recession, and then accelerated again after hurricane. About 2,000 students come to us to report victim. And then the pandemic, you can see that there. And we are roaring back at our school since after the two years. Number of schools, we have 205 schools currently. We're gonna add five new schools next year. We have two new high schools this year, they play at Vista High School and Horizon High to help alleviate some of the growth and overcrowding. Of course, that still continues in certain parts of our school district, and we continue to bring new schools online. So five new schools will be, will be onboard as a logist of this next school year. Our students come from 208 countries, they speak 166 dialects and languages. 13% of our students are English language learners, which means they, English is not their first language, spoke to them in the household. And they can receive AICL classes and others. But a very diverse population of socioeconomic status. Free and reduced lunch meal recipients is up nine and a half percent since 2013. We, we actually are up to 75% free and reduced lunch over the last two years. The federal government had provided a waiver for us to be able to waive all lunch fees for our students. And we fed 100%, or at least offered 100% of our students free lunch during the last two years. That will end as of June 30th, and we will return to qualifying for free and reduced lunch. So that's where we are. This isn't, this, this isn't a mirror of poverty level, although it tracks along poverty level. The poverty level in Orange County is up to the high 30%. This is a much lower threshold for, for qualifying for free and reduced lunch, but it certainly tracks along the same lines. We see that, those trends over time. Speaking of meals, we served 47 million meals last year. That's up 18% over the, over the prior year. A direct result of the pandemic, we were feeding in multiple feeding sites all over the district. Breakfast, lunch, multiple meals at a time were given to families so that children could eat at home and where they were learning from home during that time and even last year. So we haven't, we don't have a final count on the total number of meals served for this past year, and we will at the end of our fiscal year, which ends June 30th. We do average about 213,000 meals a day. That's more than my food and nutrition services, but it tells me that's more than the five largest entertainment parks here in Orange County that we serve per day. We only serve breakfast and lunch, they serve meals all day and all night. We have 619 buses that travel on our roads daily. One bus, just so you know, takes 48 cars off the road. So you can imagine 29,000 additional buses per day if those buses weren't running. Just a quick plug, if anyone knows anyone who wants to be a bus driver or be hired, always hire a bus driver. Because they're, and busing is, we need our transportation services. It's, it's quite an operation. Our, we run more buses, two and a half times more buses than links. We're larger than Atlanta, Dallas, Los Angeles, any of the major urban public transportation will run more buses, 37, 30, 13.7 million dollars per year. Very proud of our finance procurement departments. They've won several awards, certificates of achievement for financial accounting and procurement. In fact, we've won the Governor's Sterling Award for HR and for operations three times, one for HR, one for operations, which is the, it's, for those of you that are familiar with the Alvin Waller Rich Award, it's the state version of that. It's for operational efficiency and effectiveness of the organization. We did win the Waller Rich Award actually this year, we're very proud of that. As an educational institution, Dr. Jenkin's traveled to Washington D.C. to get the award through the Waller Rich Foundation, it's fascinating, it's so weird. Our ratings are strong, don't borrow money right now, we have to borrow money for building schools. We've been able to use impact fees, half the sales tax revenue, capital, but our ratings have stayed strong throughout the recession. Our operational costs, so when it comes to administrative costs per student, we're the lowest amongst the seven largest school districts in Florida, we're the eighth lowest amongst the 67 school districts in the state. And the Department of Education tracks that every year and provides support. We're very proud to be, always be in the top 10 lowest districts when it comes to administrative costs. More money going directly to support students, to support schools, and less on the corporate floor. We distributed 200,000 digital devices. That process and program started actually in 2013 and was continuing over the years up until 2020, and it began to accelerate. About 68 schools didn't have digital devices, and we accelerated that endemic kit in the, everyone else was working from home and scrambling to get computers. We were able to get enough computers to outfit 68 schools and their students. By September, we started ramping that up in March, and by September, every student has a digital device, which fortunately, we had started that in 2013, didn't have as heavy of it as some of the other districts and businesses did, trying to get digital devices or work with them. Graduation rate in 2000 was 49.5%. We were graduating less than 50% of our students. And today, as reported in January by the Department of Education, among our traditional high schools, we're at 98.4% graduation rate. Very proud of that, even amongst all of our schools, whether you put charter or alternative, we're still at 90.4%. To us, that is the ultimate key performance indicator. If we're graduating students, preparing them for college and career, that, that's the rate we're looking for. This doesn't happen overnight. This has been a gradual steady decline since 2000. It's about accountability, which the accountability systems went into place in 2000. It's about teachers at the classroom levels, guidance centers, social workers. It's about our principals, our assistant principals that are working every single day at the school to make sure that students are moving through their school career effectively, getting the credits they need, getting the courses they need. It doesn't start in ninth grade, this starts in kindergarten. You don't get to a graduation rate this high starting when you get in ninth grade. You have to start earlier and, and prepare that path. So credit to all of the educators in Orange County. I have a video, I don't know if you'll be able to hear it. This is a, I'm gonna let it run a little bit, just to give you an idea. This is a Windermere High student, we do great grads here. We have 22 great grads who feature at the end of the year, and not necessarily, they're not necessarily your valedictorian or seducutorian, they're usually students that's just really working hard for us to go, go somewhere beyond, just doing something beyond high school, has, has, has overcome something during their schooling or during their life. This is one of our students. I would like to play this voice back. As you can imagine, we're gonna, everyone in our high school seniors talk about their teacher here, the name, reflection that they had while they were coming, how much they missed, they part of that school community and work hard. And a lot of these students just roared right out and got right back into, into their lives and pursuing their futures beyond high school. We are an A school district in Orange County, we're one of 24 districts of the 67 that are A. We have our national accreditation for Prada. We're actually accredited in 2021, re-accredited your first accredited as a district in 2016. They do that every five years. We're only one of a handful of school districts in the country that does a district-wide accreditation. Most schools are accredited school by school. We opted to do it, it's a much more rigorous process to do it across the district, gives great feedback for continuous improvement, to go in and look at our academics, our processes, make sure that they're aligned with best practices. And so we've done that two cycles now, and we'll probably continue to do this because it really does allow for that continuous improvement over time. Talk a little bit about the One Mill and what it helped us to do during the recession. So during the time athletics, arts became an issue as far as being able to afford and continue to, to have those programs. Middle school sports, additional sports in high school, the high school athletic association sanctioned sports, having all of those. We've been able to preserve all of those. Every one of our middle schools have a middle school athletic program for boys and girls, free sports they offer, they compete against each other. Our arts program, we have arts program every single school in Orange County. That was one of the commitments the board made when they asked the voters to go out for the One Mills, to ensure that we had arts available. We have the highest percentage of participation in arts amongst the five largest school districts in the state, and the highest percentage amongst each category, whether it's men, black, white, English language learners, and even free reduced lunch, the highest percentage above all of those. And it really is a credit to the show One Mill and, and what they've been able to fund. And I'll show you some of that and how the funding's laid out. Here's some of our students participating in visual and performing arts throughout the year. We were named, six years in a row, Best Communities for Recent Education by the M.A. Foundation. Talk a little bit about the budget, get into the One Mill and how it makes up the district operating budget. So state revenue is about 51% of our operating budget, local revenue is 49%. This is just operating, not capital. The One Mill makes up 9% of the total district operating funds. It generates, and I'll get to about 162 million last year, it'll generate over 107 million. Special Villages first approved in 2010 by 54%, it's continued with yes vote, 76% in 2014 and 2018, 84% yes vote. Here's how the One Mill has spent in 2020, 2021, 86 million, retaining highly qualified teachers, 1,165 teachers, counselors, social workers, in college and career readiness programs, and those teachers that support those programs in our high schools. The deputy arts, art management, drama, music teachers are about 55 million. 7.7 million for athletics, made from coaches, athletic trainers, freshman coaches, JV coaches, middle school coaches, protects student activities. It looks like I'm missing a zero in that number, it's 195,000, that sounds kind of low. It actually is about a zero. It normally is about $2 million, but because of the pandemic, it's still trips or after school tutorials. So we reinvested that money back in some of our teachers and coaches that were doing things with students outside of the school day or outside of the classroom time. Of course, we were shut down for most of that interference, the majority of our students. Charter schools receive a proportionate share of the money. They always have since 2010, it's actually required by law now. The board decided in 2010 that, you know, charter school students are public school students, those are public schools. This, the parents are residents, taxpayers in Orange County, and so sharing in proportion, sharing maybe about 12.6 million. Total of 161 million dollars generated in that year. Here's what the budget looked like in 2010. So when the recession started, the budget dropped about $1,000 per school in about two-year time period, took a couple of special sessions. We all remember that extremely difficult time, property values dropping, the economy was a serious recession, 10% unemployment, 12% unemployment. We saw our pursuit of funding drop overnight and was continuing to drop. The One Mill, the only way the board could address that and have the power to do it, since the legislature sets their budget and their militaries, was to adopt additional One Mill voted on by the, by the voters. So they put that question before the voters in 2010. It was approved in 2011, you can see the effects of the One Mill and what it did. It actually kept us stable as we were climbing out of the recession and prevented us from diving deeper into the hole in 2011 and 2012. Here's the primary issue of why we're still here and haven't been able to catch up. So the requirement of the left, the village rate set by the legislature is 5.4 bills in 2010. Today, it's 3.5, we're 1.88 bills below where we were in 2010. And the legislature just left the village rate where it was and allowed natural market forces to enact that we wouldn't even be here. We would be at the CPI level where you saw that line on the budget. And the legislature rolled back the village significantly, starting in FY16, continued to roll back in order to, as we were coming out of the recession, property backs were increasing, more properties were coming on the tax rolls. They were reducing the village and adding, trying to add enough state revenue to fill that gap. You can see based on the last, there wasn't, it wasn't filling the full gap of what the requirement of the left were generating. It still, it continued to provide an increase in, in revenue, pro-shoulder revenue, but not to the level we expect where we were in 2008. Here's a ballot question that'll be for the voters. One change, the board, the school board in, had decided that compensating teachers and support staff, the legislature did make a commitment to increasing beginning teacher salary. They moved teacher salary from, in our district, from $40,800 for beginning teacher to $47,500. That caused a 12-year experience compression for teachers that were already teaching for us. So everyone below that was pushed up to 47.5, and 12-year teachers were just above that level. So having that and also the requirement of the $15 per hour, we have to get the $15 per hour statute based on legislation passed this past session by October 1st. So in order to do that, we can do that with existing funding the legislature provided. The issue is retaining the staff that have been there, experienced that, using federal funding to provide salary supplements to offset some of that compression. The issue has been, how do we do that and continue that reality? So some of the growth from the village of value will go directly towards compensating experienced teachers and support staff, and also investing in some skilled staff that were losing to the private sector in order to keep moving forward. Other than the dates, that's the, that would be the major change. What it said before was to retain highly qualified teachers, which we've been able to do, and keep those teachers employed without letting them go. What we need to address now is really the salary for teachers and bus drivers and our food service workers. Here's the funding without the One Mill, with a 30% projected increase in pursuit of funding and CPI. You can see the deficit go to $1,700 per student as compared to the CPI. If, I think based on what we've seen in inflation rates, and you know what's happening, that CPI line will bend north. So that's only based on a 3%. It would be about an 8% increase in, if it's based on last month anyway, on the inflation rate. So in summary, just to give you an overview, August 23rd, primary ballot, there will be, and, and ask of the voters to continue with the current One Mill act. Give you a little overview, the, the cost to a homeowner. And I verified this with three times, with the Orange County Property Rights Act CFO. The median assessed home value in Orange County is 29, $229,000. Now that's about half of what you can see the value of that home on Zillow, Realtor.com, or what you can sell it for tomorrow. But when you look at what your tax assessment is based on, based on Save Our Homes, based on affordability, based on those other things that actually suppress the taxability of your home. It averages 229,000. You can go to the Orange County Property Rights Act website and look at the median assessed value or your assessed value of your home, and, and it'll, they'll show you. I had a former employee in before, and he said, my house is worth over $500,000. And I said, well, let's look up your home. And I said, well, your assessed value is $247,000. So you could sell your home for that, but that's not your pretty tax home. So if you look at that number and you subtract 25,000 homestead exemption, it'd be $204 a year is what the taxpayer would currently be paying right now. That's $17 per month, and that's up $6 per month over 2010. So it's 50 cents on average per month. So it's fifty cents on average per month, uh, over the last twelve years. So, um, small investments, uh, over the, over time with huge returns, uh, the, the, it'll actually generate. This one mil will generate about eight hundred million dollars over four years. So about two hundred million a year, um, throughout, you know, through, through Orange County. Um, it is the last item on the ballot. It always is the last item on the ballot. So we always say first thing you can hardly pass on the ballot. Just remember that when you vote. Um, the one mil is for essential operating expenses to compensate teachers and preserve athletic programs, arts, uh, athletics and student activities. The deadline to register voting until last twenty-fifth, vote by mail starts in July twenty, and early voting is the eighth and first of the primary elections on August third. About sixty percent of the votes will be cast prior to, uh, the election based on what we've seen historically, what's happening now across the country.
Thank you. Any questions?
Um, diversity numbers, that includes, um, deaf, hard-earranged, disabled, disabled, all that.
When, when we, when we're talking about accessibility in ours, that's included in all of the, all of the subcategories absolutely.
So I see you have a whole lot of support for ours. What, it needs support for STEM activities?
Yeah, that's a great question. So STEM is our core, is the core of, of our, of our program. So when, when you're, when we were talking about recessionary things, cutting our STEM activities, science and math are included in that, primary funding, you could not get rid of that. Now the additional add-ons like magnet programs, robotics, those types of things, those would be covered under the student activities, uh, piece. Also magnet programs have been a huge part of what we've been able to do, it's been through the one mil, and a lot of our magnet programs are STEM-based.
Uh, thank you for the presentation. It's very nice. And personally, I think teachers will pay three times what they're making now. Uh, but, uh, just real briefly, can you talk about the, the changes that are pending for the laptop exchange or the laptops are going to prevent some graduations in the past or that being addressed or being taken away?
Yeah, actually, that has been addressed. It will be addressed. The, the staff have worked on that. Obviously, we have a, a fiduciary, uh, expectation to the voters in Orange County and for taxpayers in Orange County to provide the devices to make sure that we're, uh, collecting reimbursement. There is a process by which we go through, uh, as far as notifying, uh, in a tiered, um, uh, way of reimbursing for anything that should device. Uh, one of the things that, uh, that was problematic in that was the replacement cost of the device. If the device had been an older device, like six years old, and causing the, the parent to have to reimburse for the full amount, that will be parlayed down to whatever the value would be. So that's one of the major changes in that. Uh, also to ensure that we're, um, looking and breaking out when, not just the device, but the other components that go to the device. To make sure that those are looked at individually as far as, uh, reimbursement, cords, um, other accessories that go on. So that will be addressed and has been addressed, uh, by, uh, by leadership and they will be. Thank you.
Yeah, one other question, uh, in light of recent events, what, um, what's being done to improve school safety?
That's a, that's a great question too. So since twenty-fourteen, we actually, uh, have worked twice at our district and says for, um, for specifically around school safety, since Sandy, going all the way back to the Sandy tragedy. Looking at what we can do as far as hardening our schools, single-point entry, fencing our campuses, uh, making sure that we have, uh, narrow access points. We have, uh, SRO as required by law now, SRO on every campus. We have, um, every high school campuses, two, um, SROs. We have that. Uh, I think the, the change is making sure we have law enforcement on every campus every day uh, in order to respond to any, any issues that occur. We're constantly looking at ways to improve security and, uh, and reevaluate that. And every time a tragedy happens over Tewolby, or Portland, or Sandy, it's a time to reflect and to look at what we're doing in practices and making sure that, that, that those processes are improved. We don't share our security plans or processes with the public for obvious reasons, but we certainly know, know that we're, that our, uh, internal safety and security folks are constantly.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you, thank you.
Everybody. Yes, sir. Just so everybody's aware, Mary Ron again couldn't make it tonight. Uh, we got Molly Rose, her member Rose, online. Uh, she can discuss these issues via Zoom, but she cannot, so via Zoom. Uh, so that's one item that I'm making sure that you were aware of. And she'll raise her hand icon when she has, uh, when she wants to speak, I'll let you know. The problem is that we're gonna have to shut off the mic here, the mic here. Uh, so you might be a little back and forth with the layout on that. So technology at its greatest and, and old historic building, so, um, please bear with us while we get to that. So did you want to open up the Oakdale, uh, or Southeast Quadrant?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, as you said, as somebody who's laid out, we've been looking at this issue since, I think, on board twenty-eleven, we did a traffic study in twenty-fourteen, subsequent, uh, traffic study in twenty-eighteen with the Orange Associates. They looked at, uh, not only internal, but external, meaning that they, um, look at origin destination using GPS coordinates that people utilize every day. Um, and what we learned was seventy-five, seventy-five percent of people that are coming in and out of town are from outside of our area. Um, essentially meaning horizon is less and based on what you presented tonight, and you see that most of the support being developed out there as well. So, uh, most of the vulnerable is determined to the left of us and they're using us as a conduit to get through town. Uh, in addition to the origin destination study, the internal study as well, to see who is actually cutting through on the side streets, maybe seventh, eighth, Bessie, Oakdale, Magnolia, uh, Lake Street, Ridgewood. And what they found was that there, uh, wasn't enough of an initiative to make any changes at that time. Um, also since the twenty-fourteen, we've been doing internal studies, which were presented to not only the people that attended the public meetings, also the town council and LRP, is that what we've seen is a steady amount of traffic on increase and that most of the traffic that is on those roadways are within the accepted parameters, which is the eighty-five percentile, um, within speed. You know, they're running twenty miles an hour or lower. Uh, and again, there's some factors that go into that eighty-five percentile that not everybody's going to be following, uh, the law, not everybody. Um, it's more like here's stop signs and also you have taken into the environmental factors, seeing the, the roadway, the condition of the roadway, and how far the, uh, homes are set back and so forth. Uh, but again, that doesn't really support, um, what a lot of residents were viewing out there. And what we learned from the first public workshop, which was held on April eighteenth, and again for notification. When we do notifications, we typically notify everybody within five hundred feet, um, of a particular issue. And so for the April thirteenth, we notified the residents that just saw a long Oakdale. Uh, the second meeting that we had on April twenty-second, or April twenty-sixth, the public workshop, we notified everybody within five hundred feet of Oakdale. Now the discussions progressed from the first meeting to the second meeting, uh, from just shutting down Oakdale and Sixth and Twelfth and Chase, and then morphed into, um, the second meeting that we had, um, which was pretty much shutting down all the access points south of Sixth Avenue for the Southeast quadrant. Um, then we had a workshop with Long Range Planning, uh, that was held on May nineteenth. Um, the Long Range Planning Committee made the recommendation to go ahead and, um, pretty much give two options. One of which was to shut all the access points off of Sixth Avenue, uh, and Twelfth and Chase, and the second one was just to leave Twelfth and Chase out of that. Um, then we had a town council workshop. And all these workshops, all these meetings, they're on our app, they're on our, uh, Facebook, Instagram, uh, Nextdoor, on our website. Uh, so we do the best that we can to try to notify everybody in a reasonable amount of time to have a, a chance to actually, you know, come to a meeting, participate virtually. Um, so we've had, uh, four meetings, five including this one, this discussion on. This doesn't include the past meetings that we've had, those are just, uh, subject matter, you know, basic changes since twenty-nineteen with the signings to help try to retail some of the, um, cut through traffic issues and then it happened. Um, but based on all of those meetings that we had, and the consensus of town council at the last, uh, workshop was to, um, go ahead and close down the access points along Sixth Avenue, um, and Twelfth and Chase, and have town staff come up with a, uh, a science plan, which we did, and that's included in your packet. Um, just because there is a science plan that an engineer has reviewed, again, is not being engineers approve of closing down those roadways. Again, um, what the data shows is different from what is being initiated by, by the residents. Again, this is a resident-initiated solve to a problem. And again, what was discussed at the, uh, town council meeting, um, in May was that there would be a review time of three months and six months, once we're able to get this thing going. Again, it's not gonna be something that we're getting happen overnight. Um, we discussed, you know, not being so pot committed to this, so we're gonna be putting in the split rail fences. Um, they typically see at the parks with the little access point for pedestrians. Uh, so we'd have to order those, install those, give people thirty days' warning of closures to give them a chance to change their driving patterns. Uh, so we'll have message boards out and also, you know, we'll make sure we put a lot of media out there as well, saying that the changing batteries is gonna change. And then once we pretty much pull the trigger on that, then we'll start getting a feel of not only the feedback, but, you know, seeing how it's working. We'll do a three-month review, which will hopefully get us to that sweet spot of January, February, where you see the most traffic. Um, and then closer to, again, uh, the six months, where you'll be closer to the summertime, which we are right now. Um, and then you'll have an idea, okay, do you want to permanently close these areas? And come up with a plan of how you're, are you going to close these? Put a, uh, what type of permanent barricades are you gonna put up? And what is still gonna be accessible if there is an accident or if there's a fire EMS situation, um, that we can still remove those barriers in order for us to flow traffic through this, uh, during those certain times. Um, and that would have to be done either via resolution or ordinance. Um, now, tonight you do have the authority to, um, make a decision and a motion to vote to close down those roadways. Um, another way of doing this would be to either pass a resolution where you temporarily close these roadways for a certain amount of time, do a reevaluation, and then if you're still comfortable with the route that you're taking, then go ahead and do an ordinance form where you actually codify it to where it is a dead-end street for those selected areas. Uh, so tonight, again, um, you know, we've seen a lot of the, the public comment, a lot of emails that came through, we've talked to council on all those emails. Uh, some of the, you know, comments that we did see was, you know, well, we weren't given a door knocker, we weren't notified or anything. Again, again, we do our best to try and notify everybody. This, the way that the discussion progressed to shutting down one area all the way up to shutting down all the areas progressed so quickly that, again, we weren't able to notify you within the Southeast quadrant, because I pretty much pulled my public work guys off uh, for probably half the day to notify and do the door knockers to everybody along that Southeast quadrant. So we have the option tonight to further discuss it, make an own decision tonight, uh, or to have a resolution right at the next July meeting. Uh, and in between that, you know, in order for me to accommodate some of the people that live in the Southeast quadrant that maybe didn't feel they didn't get their, you know, voice heard, they weren't part of the discussion, uh, we do have a workshop on the twenty-eightth, but we need to just do a public information workshop or actually have town council workshop on that date too. Because subsequently to our last workshop, you know, there's been some other ideas floating around relative to what's gonna be a less invasive type of maneuver um, and burn on someone's people that live on, uh, or close to Sixth Avenue, on Oakdale, Bessie, Magnolia, and so. Uh, yeah, and we do have, uh, some public comment that was requested, be ready for the record, um, before we open her up. So, okay, if we read that one right now?
Yes.
I believe everybody was copied on. It's from Brandon Gaines and Dorf, if you're doing the honor of reading Brandon's, uh, uh, email.
Hi Gina, we are in support of the great closures as proposed. There has been discussion about reducing the traffic on Oakdale Street for many years. I brought the issue up in two thousand and seventeen, and I know there was discussion before then. The town has tried residence-only signs and was forced to remove them as they were not enforceable. The police have done traffic enforcement to the best of their ability and resources, but cannot maintain it, enforcement continuously, it is not feasible. We have discussed more stop signs, speed bumps, one-way streets, et cetera. After years of talking, instead, this was a solution that stakeholders have come up with. I have tried to gather a consensus of residents in this quadrant of the town, put a trial run of this proposed road closure to make it impossible for non-residents to cut through our side streets while still allowing residents to exit with as a minimal sacrifice as possible. It will add two to four minutes coming back from the Oakdale area, depending on where you live. I also use the side streets proposed for closure to the door every time I go in or out to a man. I know it's a sacrifice, but it isn't the best entrance of the residence to keep our streets safe. Pleasant Six would distribute residents out of their nearest numbered avenue to Main Street. Exiting on Main Street and turning left is sometimes difficult, but the option exists to turn right and use the traffic circle to go in any direction needed. On the flip side of that, if you were to exit out and try to turn left onto Sixth and close Main Street, intersections that would be near impossible at times. I know the northeastern portion of the quadrant was not notified early on, and that was a mistake. I tried to reach out to as many as I could personally and ask the neighbors that I did get in touch with to discuss it with the neighbors on their street or block. Obviously, some still don't know. I think it is important to get their input. But I would please ask that they would take the time to listen to what other residents in the quadrant said at the two public workshops, Long Range Planning Meeting and the Town Council Workshop that occurred in April and May, as they are on YouTube. This is the best way for them to get caught up on all the scenarios that have been discussed as a solution. And I hope that they will consider trying this proposed closure of roads, as it is a temporary trial. I am happy to chat with anyone who wants to discuss this issue sincerely, for any of your things.
And I do wish you attached a map. I didn't see Legend attached that map to explain, but I'm guessing, uh, some of the ones that starts on it are the ones that are in favor or are spoken favor, and some of the ones are the ones that were, you know, not in favor. And again, the, the dialogue has changed from two thousand and seventeen. When we first started talking about this, as far as temporary barricades, barriers, south of Sixth, those, you know, Oakdale and, and ninth, Oakdale and Eighth. Um, and then, you know, we talked about the lack of most situation that would occur, which is close Oakdale, then it's gonna be, uh, burden's gonna be on Magnolia, and it's gonna be, uh, burden on Seventh and Bessie. Uh, so that's where decisions maybe came from, to close all the areas down south of Sixth. Now again, you know, this is a resident-initiated, um, request, and the reason of it is we're not out there every single day, experiencing this every single day. I, I, I can't, um, dispute any facts of what they see on a daily basis. All I can do is put the strips out there for the cars to go over and get the counts. But that may not necessarily reflect what they see on a daily basis, and I don't want to discount that. Um, because again, this was the majority of the people, if not all the people that were on those calls, were in favor of shutting down those streets, stopping. shutting down those streets, South of Sixth Avenue.
Robert, if I could, the legend that she explained to me is all the star are folks that have, uh, voiced support. The red stars are folks that voice support in public forum, even the workshops are very top counsel. Uh, the pencil stars are folks that she's discussed with. Um, the red Xs are folks that opposed it in public forum. And then, uh, pencil Xs are folks that have opposed it, but she's had discussion.
And I do believe Town Council's been, uh, copied on and all correspondence of that with residents, which was a lot over the weekend. Uh, whether it's via text or email, um, but, uh, we have provided those comments to you. So, wonderful, thank you. So, we're gonna back up to another comment, uh, Mr. Collins.
Uh, Martin Collins, uh, seven way Bessie. Thank you, James. I'm gonna repeat this, this is pretty good, and it makes it hard for more agents to. I live in my house, so I watch the traffic. But I did not attend the Oakdale Street Public Workshop, because I'm sure expecting that area and not Bessie. After I heard about those, those six avenues streets, I watched all the recordings of the meetings, as Brandon suggested. Very informative, good meetings. Um, the Oakdale Street neighborhood believes that there's an issue outside the area of fires. I passed in around about two of them mainly using Oakdale. The Oakdale traffic has two entrances and exits. Exits one is Sixth and one is Main. And the motion today only asked to consider blocking one end of that route. It was discussed in the workshop. At one point, the block Main in a very quick advantage probably because it would inconvenience Oakdale residents. There's at least one alternate solution, and the working committee's, uh, anyway, that solution, closing the Main Street into the route with stock pickup through traffic. This solution keeps the residents' traffic disruption in the Oakdale Street area. Those are the folks that benefit. Why are they not building what I do with traffic disruption, I'm suggesting? Part of what Robert said is this is a resident-initiated solution. That means they're voting for a solution that has the least impact for their neighborhood. In the recordings of meetings, the town manager reports on multi-year Oakdale Street traffic studies. It was clearly stated that why the town manager of the studies also Oakdale traffic is an unexpected normal pattern for a number of houses in here, and the number of car drivers per house. Traffic speeding studies show all speedings with expected limits. No data from the study show how many cars may be cut, be cut through commuters. We do not know what the size of this potential problem and what we are trying to fix. Unknown. Is it ten cars a day? Is it five cars a, you know, only on weekdays, only in a rush hour? Why are we shutting our streets for something we don't know the size of the problem? Study studies show that there has not been a year-over-year increase in traffic. Robert just said that. Now, manager stated Oakdale residents do not believe traffic study data. And the issue may be more perception than reality. That's from the meetings, now. I got, I got one sense. In the May night meeting, the chairman of the long-term planning committee stated that he did not believe the traffic with the supports, the proposed closure solution. He went on record. Um, anyway, you guys all have a letter I published. Uh, I didn't know I could ask to have it read into the record and not used on my team members. But at your convenience, if you could do that, then you could put my, uh, complaints in the record. Now, you know, you guys have a tough job. Please let, you know, let this hardworking committee go back and come up with a couple of alternatives instead of this nuclear option of closing out Sixth from some residents on the Oakdale Street that don't wanna consider closing their streets. You know, we don't get a benefit from this, because I'm a Sixth Avenue guy. You know, there's another couple of ways to get rid of this. Let's go back and study and talk, invite some of us that may have alternative approaches to solving this, to get more active, as we would be. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, my name is David Sharp. I live at ten twenty-seven Oakdale. Uh, I have lived there for over thirty years, uh, so not new to the area. Um, a couple of points I'd like to make tonight. First, let's start with the data. Um, we keep hearing that the data doesn't show the need for, for anything to happen here, but I look at the data a little different. Um, when the data in the study that was in the workshop, there were roughly eight thousand trips in, in, in between Sixth and Seventh. And eleven percent of those folks are going north of twenty miles an hour, which is thirty-three percent over the speed limit. And I don't think we should accept that. You know, whatever engineer says, this eighty-five percent is okay. I don't think we should accept eight to nine hundred people a month speeding down whatever dirt road it is. They're just not set up for it. It's dangerous, and that's why I think we need to do something. Um, also, keep in mind that where the tubes were set were only thirty feet from a four-way stop sign. So, if you think about it, how would eleven percent of the people get over thirty-three percent, uh, of the speed limit? That, that takes some doing. And if you think about where there are not four-way stops, how fast people are going. So, there is an issue there. And if we look at the reverse of the engineering study, i- it's a significant issue. Um, we talked previously about enforcement is the solution. I think what the data also shows is that the, the traffic has now gone from almost a couple hours a day to all day. So, I don't think enforcement is a solution here. I think the nuclear option, as what was referred to, is the solution. And on supportive of blocking Sixth at all entry points, I think Twelfth has to be part of it. Otherwise, you'll have people coming from Keys Point and elsewhere using that as an opportunity to use Oakdale and all the, you know, all the way down to Seventh and pop out there. The reason blocking Main Street was kind of shot down quick is because that, by doing that, it doesn't leave the roundabout open for residents to use as an option to go wherever they wanna go. So, that's why blocking Sixth was a, what we thought was a more viable solution to the problem. The last thing I'll say is, real quick, hey, quick, all right. If, if this goes forward and it's a temporary deal, I think we've got to set some parameters around logging of calls. So, we know who's calling in, where they live, who they are. So, we know i- if we're gonna take complaints, who they are and whether they are factual residents. So, we can, you know, review that data completely. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Collins?
Uh, I'm, I'm James Arcompo, six one five Bessie Street. Uh, I've lived there for thirty-nine years. Okay, so, uh, I, I've seen this situation go from where it is way back, okay? Um, I know you all have this document that Mr. Collins provided to you. I think I'm gonna make this short. First of all, this is an Oakdale resident issue, okay? The five hundred feet may be legal, you only identify people, but when you're gonna shut down a whole quadrant, okay, people. I think those people are very important, okay, regardless of how you're trying to communicate to people. And if we put door knockers all the way down Oakdale, why don't we put them down Magnolia and Bessie and the rest of the people, okay? Second of all, okay, you, you can talk numbers all you want, okay? Uh, I'm an industrial engineer, you know, figures don't lie, the liar's figured, okay? You can take these numbers and do whatever you want. I do believe there is an issue, okay, going down Oakdale at times. But if we're forced to go out by Seven, okay, where the, the gallery is and the salon. Well, if people on Oakdale, they can come down there and go out too. So, what is wrong with shutting down all the exits on Main Street? If you're gonna test a solution, test that one. And then you have a backup, okay? If you don't tell me that didn't work, you go to Sixth Avenue, okay? So, they do have a way to act the same way I can act sometimes, okay? So, you know what, most of, and I am retired, I admit, you know what my solution is? If I don't have to go get my wife Starbucks in the morning, I don't go out, except then to. So, that's the way I fix. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Collins?
On the seven o'clock Bessie Street, we've, uh, had that residence live there for fifty-three years. I grew up in this town. I've spent in this town. Um, I walk my mom's house, she's eighty-nine years old, every Tuesday, Thursday, Sunday. And I see all the cars on Rush Hour traffic, four and six, we go walking. I can't tell who's a resident and who's not. So, I think you gotta follow that. I think you may as well stay by closing anything right now, because there's just not enough information. I understand the Oakdale folks. I get it, but my major concern, and I really don't appreciate this, uh, is that you're limiting the EMS response. You're extending their, their response time by blocking these streets. I can tell you, I think that, uh, Mr. Smith said in the video, that they really don't wanna open up the town's litigation. I tell you right now, if there's a fire, or there's a catastrophic incident, somebody's, a life event situation, if you block these streets, there will be litigation brought to the front of the work of this town, and everybody is really responsible. Because I will make sure that if they can't get there in time, if my mother, you'll see me again. And I, and I think that other people will do that way too. So, I can be careful to consider that you're blocking public streets. This isn't just a back road over here or something off of Second Avenue. These are main roads over there, so you're made to handle traffic. No one knows who these people are. They could be residents or not. Why, why is it seem to be concerned?
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Reinhardt?
For the people that are listening online, uh, no public comments can be taken from the Zoom feed. Um, you can draft a response and email to Town Council. Um, but the, uh, public comment is just within the confines of town.
Sure. First, I'm putting in, in the nurse's place.
I'm Matt Carrier, uh, sixty-five Oakdale. I'm, uh, hundred percent in support of Oakdale. Uh, Six, I have three small kids. All my neighbors have kids constantly, all day. It's crazy. There's way more cars than that engineering study showed. There was a high-speed chase up two days ago through the neighborhood, people cutting from the, the art room back over. People avoid the roundabouts, they're coming them out. It's just, it's hectic, it's chaos. Uh, we wanna shut it down, do something, just to try to see what we can do to solve the problem.
Thank you.
One question, uh, I do think, would you like to speak, uh, please, at least if I think the assignment she does, uh, about where we're there.
How you doing? Jeff Walters, six oh five Oakdale Street. This has been, uh, quite a issue for, for obviously our street. Uh, you know, we, we bring this not to make things better for us as far as cutting through our own streets. We do it solely for our children that are on these streets every day. Um, we've had a couple of close calls. My, my dog got hit by a cut through traffic. They kept on going. And, you know, one thing that we brought up in these meetings, uh, and Mr. Smith and Paul Dax, thankfully, uh, to get our voices heard, is that it's not the amount of people or the speed, it's, it's the aggression of the drivers. They are not aware that as they're driving down the street, they're driving down our sidewalks, right? That is what it is. Our streets are our sidewalks. We don't have the ability to go off the streets. Uh, five-year-olds don't have that comprehension, right? They don't know, oh, among the grasses, along the street, and, you know, they, they have their friends, and they're, they're not paying attention to what is going on around them. So, we thought, you know, and it never did start as, let's shut down everything. We wanna client favorite neighborhood. We don't wanna EMS company, and it never started that. And I'm sure if you go back and watch the videos, you can see that. It started out as a simple road closure to try and deter traffic. We were actually thinking of the other parts of the dirt roads by saying, well, we do shut down Sixth and twelve inch chase. Maybe they will go to Magnolia, right? So, let's shut down Magnolia, let's give it, let's give it a go. Well, then Bessie came in, well, why don't they go down Bessie? So, these things are all pointed out in videos. Uh, I just think each month that we go back to our Long Range planning and another town council is another month that my seven-year-old daughter now, when we started, she was four, so she's now seven. And I have a three-year-old and a two-year-old. Each month that that goes on, those are days that our kids are walking down the street and somebody's cutting through late for work, and I'm scared for what's gonna happen to a kid, an adult, a dog, whatever the case may be, if we just don't pay attention to it now. And I think three months of this, I think is his best-case scenario as far as figuring out what is exactly going on. Um, so I hope, you know, I understand Bessie's, Bessie's problem with it, because they were involved in the beginning, completely understand. But I also hope that they understand that we've been going through this for two and a half years, you know, and it's, it's, I just want a solution. I really, I don't, I don't care where it comes from, but each Long Range Planning Committee that we have to go back to in order to get in front of you guys is another six months, a year added on to this, to this total. So, I think the sacrifice of, of our southeast quadrant, looking out for the kids that are around there, I think is, uh, is best-case scenario. I think we should definitely close down these roads right now and give it a good three-month test.
Thank you.
I, I'm in support of very, at least right now, um, and seeing, because I'm seven years here, I had a four-year-old. And we, um, when we were looking at the matters, we were happy that we were right by when she cut through. And people were speeding down the roads, and I was very grateful, because they thought we closed that off. They were shocked about reopening. I was like, absolutely not. You said, you know, that won't care. So, um, I do think that more discussions should be had, and I, I think, um, commanders are very clearly seeking for emergency vehicles, that these are temporary barriers that are removed for, for people to get in. And I, I think that we should try it out temporarily and see how it goes, have a time limit, and then go back to, um, maybe.
All right, thank you. Houseperson Devon?
So, um, my, my concern with the whole discussion is that, you know, originally this was an Oakdale issue. Um, the notification went out to Oakdale residents, um, you know, and then it quickly expanded out from there. I think public comments was, you know, received from the folks in the other streets that quickly, uh, progressed down to, um, closing their road. Uh, I, I think we just need to take a pause and do, uh, what you had suggested earlier, Robert, at the next town council workshop, uh, post bulletins on the entire district. Um, that area, uh, to have notice for, for public comment on a public workshop and do this. You know, originally, when we had the town council workshop, I was in favor of this, because it was a resident-initiated solution. I was like, you know, they're good with sealing off their own streets, to protect their own streets. I don't agree with it too, you know? I don't live near there, but. I don't agree with it too, you know, I don't live near there, but now we have significant opposition to it and alternative solutions being presented, I think we really need to look at a solution to go through that. Um, so I I think we should just make the next town council workshop and talk through it after posting, um, and goes up all the residents that that.
Okay, doesn't that mean June twenty-eighth?
Yes, June twenty-eighth, and then the subsequent town council meeting would be until October.
Um, I will be here June twenty-eighth, call me on the cruise and God forbid that you call me. I will be out of town on June twenty-eighth. So, um, I believe if you take this game down the road, I I would like to sit here and figure out something. Either either we boil it down to, either we do what everyone has agreed to, or we modify that somehow, or we come up with a different solution, you know, even if it comes down to just closing off Oakdale and see if there's whack-a-mole effect. Um, I dealt this on Ridgewood Drive, I I spoke about this in all the workshops and the council meetings, uh, the example that we had on Ridgewood, we had eight to a hundred cars a day going down Ridgewood in the evening. Uh, you know, speeds up to thirty miles an hour, and our street's only eleven feet wide from my house, it's insane. Um, these people can't read. So we put in the no-turn signs and it takes me, you know, an extra two to three minutes, go the extra three blocks and come back. And very often, when I'm passing where I would normally turn, I look in the rearview mirror and I see somebody turn. Because we still have some cuts, we got, uh, we're down to about fifteen or twenty cars in the afternoon or an evening rush hour. And very often, you know, by the time I get to the end of the street, they come back, they're just pulling up to the stop sign. And I give them hell for coming and reminding them that they're not allowed to turn there. So, um, this is a temporary situation, I'm not sure if the Bessie Street folks would be willing to, uh, give this a try, or if you entertain some type of a hybrid or other solution that would, um, you know, give the give the fitness that the Oakdale folks are looking for, and it's not just Oakdales. It's, uh, people that live on Seventh, Eighth, Ninth, Twelfth, all up and down the quadrant. There's, there's, as far as turning onto Main Street, um, or versus Sixth Avenue. I I don't really think that's, I think that's a perception issue because when I pull out from, uh, Ridgewood onto Main Street, if I have to turn left, I have to wait, if I have to turn right, sometimes I have to wait. Really, it's it's not a, um, it's not, it's not a big deal, I think you're going to find, either way, uh, there's going to be a slight delay regardless of where you're going. Yeah, it might be easier to turn right on Main Street or around the traffic circle. But honestly, if we close off parts of Main and you pull out on Sixth Avenue, I don't think it's really going to make a big difference. Um, I did, I did provide an alternate, um, scheme, I guess, and, uh, you know, maybe something to consider. Uh, I did speak to some residents also about, uh, you know, if we do close off Oakdale and Mangolia, perhaps we can do some type of mid-block lockage on Seventh between Mangolia and Bessie and create a little alcove of Bessie and, uh, Seventh Avenue. You know, it's a little pot right there, it's silky, Mangolia and Oakdale close off. Is Robert, can you bring up the the map of the, uh?
Yeah, I have it on mine and it's on the map. You do have a copy of it there on your desk.
I'm going to park this, so I did wake up in the middle of the night, literally, two a.m. With this idea. And I'm not saying it's something we should use, but we do have alternatives. And in that real world, if it was up to me personally, I would play back whack-a-mole with the drivers. I would move the barriers every six months to change the convenience level for some folks who are inconvenienced. Uh, and, you know, have like a little program where we, you know, we close off, okay, we close off Oakdale, Mangolia, and we go with the original plan, and six months later, we change it to an alternate plan such as this, where, uh, you've got a mid-block closing on Seventh. That's what fifteen minutes is saying.
I'm working on it, sorry.
Mid-block, right next to the art room, so the commercial folks will still have access to their parking lot, whatever. And then you close off eight that, and then you put a little diverter in Oakdale. So anybody coming down Oakdale has to turn left and then force them to go back up. And and then the folks on lower Oakdale, if you come in off of Main Street, you have to turn right. And they still have four options for getting out of their little neighborhood. You know, something is is a symbol, it would permanently and instantly kill any cut-through traffic attempt. But my point is, as the gentleman said, there are other solutions that we can talk about. Uh, and maybe come up with a hybrid of these things, thank you, sir. And I think that's something we need to do tonight, we don't need to take this game down the road, we need to do something rather than nothing, anything would be better than doing nothing. And I've said that, uh, with the Ridgewood thing, we we went through so many generations of what to do on Ridgewood that we finally came up with a solution. And it got to the point where we said, you know, let's do something, anything, and try it, see what happens. I think that's where we're at now, and I would like to find some type of a solution or temporary solution.
If doing that temporary solution, that, if it, you're actually.
No, so here's my thoughts on the on the, uh, intersection of Ninth and Oakdale, uh, that are set to problems. This, this is just information, this, this was not supposed to be part of the thing. But like I said, you know, it just came to me in the middle of the night, I'm like, wait a minute. And, you know, I talked to a lot of people, I said, well, we already considered that, but, um, I don't think it was in conjunction with the closures on the, uh, on the main, the two. So you're talking about two road closures and a diverter, and solves the whole problem. Or, you know, we take, well, we talked about Ridgewood, close Oakdale, Mangolia, and then, you know, do another couple of mid-block closures to, uh?
You can close twelve, that's all, that's all.
The, again, good form, for good form purposes, um, any clapping, speaking, booing, throwing stuff at town managers is not allowed. Um, please wait to be recognized so we can get Johnson's record and make sure that it's still condemned for public comment, in this case.
This is Frank Chase, nine thirty-five Oakdale Street. I still see a problem with cut through, coming from Chase Road, unless we close twelve. So if we close twelve, I think that's a work of this.
Well, who's going to cut through for three blocks, Frank?
Whoever does and gets theirs, sorry, all I can tell you, they're going to do the three blocks if they can do it.
You think they would?
Oh, yeah.
I'll defer to you.
So, I mean, I don't have a problem with whatever they close, you can close tenth, you can close ninth, you can close whatever you want. I don't mind taking ten minutes more if that is, that's what it takes to get where I'm going because there's some serious, it's gonna, I don't know, just, it's, it's, I'm over it. Somebody's going to target me, gotten so many too long, so let's figure it out, figure it out.
Somebody's going to get hurt, somebody's going to get killed, at least obviously they run over. My dog got run over on on Ridgewood. Uh, my fault because she had an leash, but four stitches later and some grease remover, he was fine. But, you know, God forbid that somebody's hit. So regarding the intersection of Oakdale and Ninth, I would recommend placing a temporary physical barrier angled across the intersection as indicated to force compliance as well as permanent no-left or right turn signage, et cetera. This barrier could be removed after a couple of weeks once drivers get the picture that they can no longer use Oakdale as a country and have relying and sports on signage alone. With the understanding that temporary barriers could be easily reinstalled at any time as needed if compliance remains. This would eliminate the need and cost of a permanent barrier or to take additional right-of-way to make turn lanes wider and would enable police to fire rescue across the intersection normally in emergencies once the barrier is removed. And, you know, we may have a occasional police car sitting there, you know, just for enforcement. My point is, you know, this is another option, there are other options, uh, but we need to stop that.
Councilmember Williams, all I ask is to hand that to Rich to speak on this, okay? So I need to, uh, councilperson.
Hi, um, thank you for letting me talk. Um, I, Bill, I think that, uh, your recommendation is not, uh, invalid. It is actually, I believe, the same recommendation that we came up with at least a decade ago. Um, the residents were not in favor. The residents were not in favor of it then. So, uh, now as liaison of long-range planning, we were very happy to see that so many residents spoke up in favor of closing down Sixth Street entrances, which was, you know, I I think is is probably a a very valid solution to the problem in that whole quadrant. Um, I don't, I I think we have to do something tonight, this has been going on for way too long. Um, I personally like closing off Sixth Street, but I don't live on Oakdale. I will let everybody know I live on Dirt Main, and when we closed off at Chase and Dirt Main, it eliminated ninety-nine percent of the problem that we had on Dirt Main. And I know it's done all over Orange County. So we need to do something, and, uh, I don't think any of the solutions that we've brought up on a temporary basis will be, um, over costly. And they are temporary, I mean, if it doesn't work, we can always go back and change. So we need to do something tonight, guys.
All right, thank you. Um, I put my two cents over. He moved it back, so this was, uh, this was right, um, on, uh, blocking off Oakdale, uh, at Catty Corner. And there was some opposition, and I think a lot of the technique, the way it presented, um, the cost of our public works during that period of time, and big ideas and a lot of price activity. So we got shot down fairly quickly. Um, I'm in favor of that. Um, I've always believed that being able to fix our traffic is going to be some sort of political as some intersections, it's just, we can't control it any other way, there's too many routes. Actually, right now, this is, this has been going on too long, I know it's a recession, but when it's this many people saying the exact same thing, it's a little bit more than that. One moment, any more comment?
I was going to say something, why do you think you put temporary closure to Sixth? To see how that works, do that immediately, see how that works, and if it's more than any chance, then we can go out with the Oakdale intersection and remove a barrier from Bessie or from Mangolia. Um, I just, I feel like, um, the reason we chose the Sixth is better than Main is because we think about everything. I've been on Sixth, I've been on Sixth, so I wouldn't let me get out on Sixth anyway, I get it around, I take two extra minutes and I get it around that. And, uh, you know, I just, I, I, I would, it's an option we could for not doing it permanently. So we close Sixth on a trial basis and then see how in three months, how that works. And then we could, and, you know, if if there's other streets that aren't having the same issues with Oakdale, then we open those back up and be there.
I just have a question, if the gentleman in the back could probably answer. Um, primarily the the cut-through traffic is morning, correct?
All day, all day.
Because, you know, in the height of rush hour in the evening, making a left on Main Street after cutting down Oakdale is problematic.
Thanks.
Yeah, I see people lining up to the podium, um, again, we have three minutes of public comment. Nothing's been deferred, strictly at town council discussion, if you want to keep this open.
I think town councils have a solution.
Understood.
Sir, so, very briefly, if I'm, if I can get a question answered.
Yes, sir, let me answer the question first.
One more time, so you're saying, you don't see, I I can't see how you have a cut-through problem on Oakdale with, uh, evening traffic doing left turns off of Sixth Avenue, coming down Oakdale to Seventh, Eighth, Ninth, or Eleventh, and then turning left on Main.
The cut-throughs happen the other way, right? So you have people leaving from from outside each point. And I've seen people cut through one block, just literally just skip, they sat in the traffic to go around the roundabout. And we we sit outside, and we have, like I said, on our block, we have eight kids, so they're always constantly playing. And we are constantly outside, we see them cut one block, all they care about, and it's, obviously, you can note it, if someone's willing to have one block on their road, they are not doing it in a nice, orderly fashion, they are doing it to skip traffic. And so, yes, we do see it constantly all day, uh, obviously, the after moods, mid-after moods are slower, but eight a.m. to ten a.m. is is bad, and then obviously, four to seven is is also bad both ways. But mainly, people do strictly take lefts to get down there and go off Oakdale.
So I think this is, uh, I'm going to respect Mr. Chase's comment about closing twelve because I think people fly down, they will turn and go all the way down Oakdale and then cut over at twelve and go straight to the intersection, continue on the Chase Road.
Yeah, my, my, I'm just here with people back, so I'm just doing. You know, it looks like we we solve a lot of the problems by blocking just Oakdale, twelve and eight.
That's where the whack-a-mole issue comes in, that you kind of go from on Mangolia.
Correct.
And then if you close Mangolia, then you kind of go from to Bessie, et cetera, so. And, you know, we we could, as an initial thing, just close Oakdale. Now, uh?
Even if you go down one way and close, uh, Chase.
They, we talked about that before, and Chief said that, so.
Tough, tough to enforce, tough to.
Tough to enforce. Uh, but if you use them to enforce with some irrational wire shooters. Now, I'm going to speak, Barbara, how do you attach to a fairway on the back of that? Over one way, which way?
One way south.
Oh, and south. So.
Because then then you have a one-way south on Oakdale. Anybody doing the cut-through, going south, they have to make the left going to Main, which is problematic. Eliminate the cut-through downs to twelve, which is the true problem of, uh, block that there.
Making it one way, then you got the people that live all the way down there, how are they going to go one block? Going south, you come back around, you go one block more.
Yes, because they can come down, sound one block, go, say, say you live mid-block between Eighth and Ninth on Oakdale. Come down to Ninth, right, uh, right turn to, um, Ninth to Main, right turn up to Main, that's right. It's all right and turn, so it's.
Okay, so what about people coming at Bessie and up on Oakdale and speeding away all over? You have to face any clothes. They go around the left, that's a lot of blocks, they're going to use it.
I got that, but you have the inhibition of having the left turn in evening traffic onto Main Street, which you can't, no problem.
You say it's the same as turning left on Sixth, then? When it's backed up, do I do that every day?
So do I.
Uh, I'm now on Sixth every day, right or left, I did it, and it backed up fast enough. Is that, is that not hard?
Just, it's actually, it's actually easier to get out on Sixth Avenue than working for the traffic.
Absolutely.
There's people, like, it's, we drive well.
Yeah.
Except for that one.
If it's backed up, they're going to take a left. I'm in favor of those, Ninth and Oakdale closure. As a start, as a test, it's the simplest, it's the least costly.
As a start, as a test, it's the simplest, it's the least costly, it keeps the majority of our openings always open with a big block right in the middle. So people have to There are the downsides, the people in Bestie have to go back home to Six, but I did it, like I said, I do it every day. My mom will be so, she'll advise everything.
I, I would agree with that. Quite possible.
End well. Yeah, I agree with the end well. I'm open for any, any solution that the council wants to agree on. The original one, when I submitted, one-way street. As long as we do something. So if this, this it will immediately eliminate all traffic traffic. It creates two closed loops that force drivers back onto, you know, the main roads. I don't think we need a whole lot of signage. Because they'll learn within one day, party's over, take your racetrack, drive and let foot self somewhere else. You're done. And so, you know, if this proves inconvenient for the folks further down Oakdale, then we can whack them all over to plan B or plan C, as stated by Councilman Depp. I almost think we need a traffic committee, which we had twenty years ago to solve the traffic problems, but, you know, we, didn't we?
Yeah, those are all things of the long range plan at this point. It transferred from traffic to long range plan.
Well, I'm gonna stop talking here. All right.
Just, just to be ready. I'll alter it in some, and I, I love this plan. And thanks for the quality of thought. This is the least impactful one with, and avoids having to go back to all of us in the Bestie area and seek approval. The only thing I'd like to ask is my good neighbors that I drive down Oakdale past to put the chase guilty. Why don't, if you're, if you want to close these streets on Sixth, why don't you want to close the streets on Main? You guys, you know, when you want a solution, neighborhood initiative, because you're on the committee. The effects are neighborhood, you're not willing to consider closing the streets in Oakdale, which is the other door. I just don't get it.
I don't think that's the intention. This was totally organic. It started out with a lot of closures on Main. And it slowly evolved with, with comment and conversation at several workshops.
Well, that it was given by the advocates that are here, conservatives.
Um, there's some on Bestie. We had some from Bestie's
You know, I, I taught, you know, and basically the some on Bestie, he's okay as long as they close it somewhere. That's, that's the answer. Anyway, thank you. I quote this, thank you.
I, I think it, I think that's, uh, one way or the other, whether you have to wait to turn on Main Street or you have to wait to turn on Sixth Avenue. I've been driving around this town for twenty-six years, and it's either no cars at all, which is very surprising, but happens, you know, more frequently than, uh, you know, than you think. Or, you know, there's two thousand cars lining, somebody invariably lets you out. And yes, that can be hazardous. I had a lady wave me through, and I went this way to make sure nobody's coming. And I went, and she gets pulled up, and I told the side of her car. Why? Wave me in. Anyway, yeah. So So, you know, there's some sacrifice either way, no matter what we do. And like I said, if we can be flexible, if we need to be, we need to change things around in four, six months, whatever, I'm willing to, you know, accept that, approve that. We did that with Ridgewood. Takes a little longer. Our street is much safer. You know, I don't worry about getting killed, uh, as much as I did before. And we still, we still, the problem with Ridgewood, signage only, we still have ten or twenty cars a day to ignore the sign, and they still complain down the street. So this, or something similar to this, by name, by B C, whatever, it completely kills the artery or the corridor is what needs to be done. Because I don't think just signage is going to, that's, that's what you're seeing.
You have a motion?
I was just gonna say, can I?
Can I make a motion, please?
Um, I'd like to make a motion as long as it's a compromise, um, of, um, of Mr. Mark's needs, um, closure to twelve and the where we call that, um, July night.
Go ahead, second. I'll say. But you take my name off of them? Your, can you run? I'll say. Being, uh, the council person's dad.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Motion passes.
So what we'll do is we'll work with public works on the intersection of Oakdale and Ninth and Twelve and Chase. And then present that and finalize it.
Okay. And then it'll be up for a resolution, like
We, we, if you're on the safer side, I would request that we do a resolution, uh, for that of everything that works.
Wonderful. We So, so this just to be clear, just be temporary, let's try, see what works, and then we'll, that's part of the resolution.
Resolution will be just formalizing exactly where we're done, um, explaining, and then yes, it, it'll be the three months, the six months, and then we're going to permanently close these two areas or have this plan in place, then codify in the ordinance.
Okay, because I honestly think that we can do away with the diverter at some point, or, you know, uh, do something like a modified type of blockage so that fire trucks can come down and, you know, get around, rather than put a concrete wall there or something like that.
Yeah, once we get to a permit, so we'll discuss different options for that, but this will still be a split route.
Yeah.
Donner, so, so your question, have we evaluated whether the
No, no engineering study's been performed there.
The one that was valued again was the, oh, the town council workshops prior to becoming also council by back in twenty seventeen.
You might speak, and you
So, this is where it kind of goes off the rest of nine, I mean, at some point, we need to follow.
Sure. Okay, so we back to
Uh, we began this to shut down Oakdale at Sixth, uh, because the consistent cut through and the dangers of people avoiding the, uh, roundabout from Eighth, from Seventh, from Ninth, at Eleven. So we suspected we avoided that, now allowing that to continue for too much every Eighth or Seventh, correct? So your plans show them, but you guys just said Twelfth and the Eighth and Ninth.
At the intersection.
At Ninth, and are we doing the Eighth?
Eighth, Ninth and Oakdale. So do you even allow you to turn back on Oakdale, go back to Sixth?
No, I was on at Ninth. I believe they showed that Eighth is still a good, Seventh is still a good.
And you put that back over on Yeah, there, well, well, it was, Eight would be closed, Seventh would be closed at mid-block, like on the line between the Harshol and the Residence.
Yeah, that's, you guys, you guys
Yes, so the motion
That works.
Okay. Just adding twelve.
Yeah.
All right, and so, you had that. The motion was for the plan estimate voting.
Yeah, with twelve.
Thank you.
With adding twelve, yes.
Is there anything quick on?
Yeah, Jeff Oldwood, six oh five Oakdale Street. So obviously, going through a lot of this, and now we have no one on Oakdale's representation of, of if they agree or not to this, right? It was, it was kind of a council member's decision.
Yes.
There's been years of us going, going over this. Uh, I do agree with you to make the decision tonight. I, you know, all I ask is, when this first started, we had our entire street of Oakdale agree to blocking Sixth and Oakdale and blocking Twelve. And that was important to the bottom end of Oakdale, sorry, I have direction challenge slide, whatever, the bottom of Sixth and Oakdale on that Main Street. That part of the street is specifically why this whole thing got started, at least we up with, with the, with the presence of the town being here. Because the majority of the kids, like, there were so many kids that lived on that street. All I ask is that if you want to trial this route, I ask that you also, since you're adding in Twelfth and Chase, I ask that you also add in Sixth and Oakdale. Because I know for a fact, because this whole thing started with us on the bottom of the screen, doesn't quite get Sixth and Oakdale on Main there. Then if we block that off, effectively making all of our kids safe right down Oakdale. Selfishly, that's the whole reason this started was, was because we want to make our kids safe, right? So we had originally agreed to Twelfth and Chase and Sixth and Oakdale, and due to us talking it out, is why more street stuffs were getting closed. And everyone agreed, oh, it's just temporary, everyone's fine with this, right? So I just ask that if you're willing to take this plan and add Twelfth and Chase, I also ask that you add in Sixth and Oakdale, which is the two original block options.
Okay, if we do that, then you're forcing everybody down Seventh back to Magnolia to get out.
That's, I, I know for a fact, Oakdale is, the, the front quadrant of Oakdale is willing to add, just like Mr. Chase said, willing to add fifteen minutes to our ride if we have to, to get out of this, this street. And I know the majority of our Oakdale citizens that are speaking up are from that lower half of the quadrant and would be in for that, especially given that you're going to block off that. So that's all I ask is that if it's a temporary three-month measure, as we've talked about doing, and agree upon doing in a long-range planning committee. And the reason it got to this point was to block off that Sixth and Oakdale and that Twelfth and Chase. So if you want to relocate traffic, that's fine. I just ask that if we block off Sixth and Oakdale, if you're going to block off Twelve, that's all I want to make sure.
We, we need to locate a lot of the barracks, but we heard it. I I think this, I, I understand your frustration, sir. I, I think this, this, I know that this will immediately eliminate any cut through traffic that you add at all. Instantly.
Supposedly, yeah.
Well, who's going to cut through after a day or two, and if they're being forced back up to Sixth Avenue, they're not going to do it again.
I know no one's going to cut down Oakdale and block off
I know, I know that for a fact. And then we got to make a round, a turnaround in wherever's front yard that is. Would, would you be mind to, if just try this for a couple of month, a, a month, a couple of months and see?
I would just ask that on the trial period, if you could block off Sixth and Oakdale, that's, that's all I ask, is make another motion, just like you added on Twelfth and Chase, to make another motion to if voted upon, to do Sixth and Oakdale.
That would be up to the motion that originated.
Uh, it is a motion, um, but again, as far as, as far as the forum, so we can bring this back in, and so we get the record correct. It, um, we would be, again, the speaker to be at the mic on the podium and directly the questions directly to each other. So we can get everything documented. So that, that's
Okay, to the council to
No, it's, it's a separate motion. If, if, if the council's willing to entertain that added, uh, area.
Do you want to keep it what we said and try it? I honestly don't think it's necessary. You, you're going to have only residents or, or Amazon trucks, or trash trucks, or ambulances, or whatever, police coming down there. And, you know, if you close off Oakdale at Sixth Avenue, you're still going to have an Amazon truck going down there. You're still going to have, you know, other people. That's just my, my personal feeling.
Guys, members of the lines, again, as far as, um, being fair and equitable, it's all parties involved, I understand that you want to resolve this tonight. It's completely up to the board to add time for people to speak or just to work it out amongst yourselves.
Make your name on your dress.
Yeah, Jeff Oldwood, six oh five Oakdale Street. Like I said, if it's, if it's only an inconvenience or a part of Oakdale, then I don't see why there would be a reason to pass the motion, a new motion to block the original two streets that this whole thing got started on, was to block Twelfth and Chase and Sixth and Oakdale. And we would, you're all the long-range planning committee, and have full support to block those streets, effectively making our Oakdale street, where there are twelve kids that live there, a dead-end street for children to play, and get our neighborhoods back a little bit. So if we know for a fact we have all of those people's support, all I'm asking is, is that along with your diversion plan and blocking Eighth and Seventh, if you could just block Sixth and Oakdale temporarily, same thing temporarily, to see if that affects our part of the street. I know that our block is supportive of this. That's all I, that's, all I want to know is if, if you can just see that part of it. Because we started this whole thing with Sixth and Oakdale, right? So I just want to know if you could just pass a motion to block that street.
I I know, but we were trying to get out of making full pockets. And if we do that, we're back to this street gets a cul-de-sac now, and which one doesn't, and would we do garbage, at least on this? I can see a route for garbage every day. I can see a route for, for ambulances. We get into cul-de-sacs, that's a whole panel. Chief, you want to weigh in on and just the one street?
You know, I said on day one, it's a traffic engineer initiative. My concern is, we haven't had this engineered. I'm not an engineer, but I certainly worked traffic at the sheriff's office with engineers all the time. That's, that was the initial concern with this concept when it was spoken about several years ago. So, so that's a concern. We can probably throw out ideas all day long. I don't know if I like the idea of two-way traffic going back and forth. Or cutting off, you know, if we're going to cut off one, what's the difference of cutting off several? But if you were to cut off Sixth and Oakdale, if that were to occur, that would not need to be a two-lane, two-way traffic on Oakdale and, what is that, Ninth? You can just shut the two roads off and make it one way. In other words, only people coming down Oakdale would have to turn left. You, you create more dead ends, which is always problematic.
And that's the problem.
Always problematic, so. I'm, I'm concerned about not having a traffic engineer study. You vote this in, and an engineer comes back and says, there's just not enough room to do this.
Was the original plan engineered?
No, the, there's, with the amount of percentages in traffic on these roadways, the engineers have stated that they would not support, from an engineering standpoint, uh, any of the necessary changes.
We're back for one.
That you do what you want to do, uh, as far as directional signs and whatnot, uh, but if you start adding stop signs, um, those types of barricades, then we would need an engineer's standard approval to locate that. Either if you're, if you're speed limit, it's in order to, to support that, in court, we need the documentation. We need a, do we need engineer for the barrier on that intersection? I would say no, because against a split road, and just to be honest, directional, if it had the impact on, um, stormwater flow, storms and so forth, then that, I think that was an issue when we discussed this back in twenty seventeen. Which brings up the water barricades. I think that was an issue when we discussed this back in twenty seventeen, was putting the the water barricades. Um, because people just move those and whatnot. But we put up the splitter off that scene again, it's something if it doesn't work over time, then we can remove it. And then if it does work, then put up something more permanent and then include the engineers as far as putting something on there that would be permanent. Along the issue of stormwater.
I would recommend we do this as voted on. If we can get some new traffic council and revisit this issue in July if we have to and see where we're at. I honestly think this is going to solve your problem. Because you're not going to have residents coming down.
We're going to be more than July because of the notification change pattern.
That's true, yeah.
Yeah, so you you we would ask, once it's implemented, at least give us three months to get the data going, just so we know where if it's if some of this is working or not working. And if it is still questionable, if it's working, then you bump it out for another three months, six months, then make an open decision at that point. Or if you need to make a decision to block the bounds of the roadways again, to behind this discussion at six month window.
Everybody agreeable to leave it as is, or do we have a motion to add six in Oakdale?
We I can't sit here and say whether it is or isn't, because we we preened this up this evening. And we haven't thought it out, the folks on Oakdale, the the residents that are going to be affected by this aren't here, the residents that are on Bessie aren't here. We need to, I would I would prefer having public comments and put this in a more rational approach.
Well, I want to kick the can down the road. I want to do something tonight, we've been kicking this can down the road for years. And so tonight, we're going to do something. Either do this, or we go back to point A, or whatever, I'm open to all of that. So I I think we need to do something.
Okay, if you want it bad, you can get it bad as well.
Councilmember, thanks, we've got Molly Rose, I'm with her, everybody's after councilmember Deb. Sorry, I didn't mean interrupting.
All right.
Council, councilperson Rose, one second, while we get her on the line.
Yeah, I I have a question for the chief. Does he see a problem with the original proposed of shutting off six street at those streets? Did you hear me? Hello? Robert, can you hear me?
Molly.
Yeah, my my question is, does the chief have a problem with us with the original plan of cutting off all those streets at six street? I know that I I now that he's talking, I'm thinking that the reason we abandoned the idea of the barricades might have been because of police concerns.
I don't want to speak for chief, but the concerns was with the permanent barrier along six avenue to where there was a traffic accident on six avenue in that area. We need something that would, we could remove, and one's notice community divert that traffic and the same would be the issue for situations of hurricane, knock down trees and stuff like that as a priority.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, the other temporary barriers was always good for us on that issue. But I think what Molly was talking about, the question came up whether if the council wanted to decide to just shut down Oakdale on six. My comment was, with your plan, then you can just close nine to Oakdale, but the residents on Oakdale, you see what I'm saying? As it, because I don't know, I don't think that's going to be a two way traffic area. That's not, you know, we just have an engineer, we have engineer as well. That was the original concern, when we put up those barriers, is there enough room for vehicles to go through there without taking property and all those sort of things on the edge of the angle? And if you were to choose to close Oakdale, you're already attempting to go down and close it all. But if you were to close that one, then those barriers just to be closing the road on nine. In other words, you would be able to drive south. But the people coming up north would have to turn left, people coming down would have to turn right. I'm sorry, but by social, if that makes sense. Again, it's all just kind of going out here.
So question, we still have to have very large eight and nine and the diversion if we close six, right? Is that what I'm understanding?
I'm just saying, I haven't, if that is your option, you wouldn't make that barrier in the middle, you would just close nine at Oakdale and Oakdale at nine. In other words, they, but you'd be creating two more dead ends.
Right, you sort of push forward.
So you would, you would at least have room for traffic to come by that intersection. The other traffic wouldn't be able to come by. Again, these are, I'm not an engineer. The original concern when this came up a couple of years ago was that there just wasn't enough for for traffic without taking property and all those things. And then and then intersection.
Well, my my thought on this was that put a barrier in temporarily with signage and, you know, maybe stupidly put the. Yeah, that's real life. And they can't cut through, we could remove the barrier, keep the signage and, you know, open the yard that would follow the law, like the majority of people originally, based on my experience. And we, yeah, we still have a few detractors, but you can have that anywhere. So. I mean, like I said, I want to do something, will we go back to the original plan if needed?
Okay. So still sitting on a vote.
Yes, yes, we still like to make the motion to vote the previous plan. And a tie vote tonight would be, in essence, a no vote, because of the not people that you have up here.
So. These are a motion that's it, that's the first one.
My question, my question is, it's a personal question.
I don't think it changes it. We don't know. This is still, we can engineer this thing to death, we've tried, tried since twenty seventeen of coming up with a line. This is, there's just not enough who's who in this. And Martini's spoken that he'd like this get done. Councilperson Rose commented the same thing tonight. I'm in agreement, we need to do something.
So my question is, would my recommendation stand? Would we still do, we just close down six, you don't need the extra diversion, right? Or?
No, you would, you still would, unless you close down every access on six, you'd still need it.
Right, because you have a lag on all the effect.
Right, okay.
And, you know, I just watch, you know, then that goes right back to point A, which is the original.
Right.
What do they have anything else? This is, this plan keeps most roads up.
I agree.
And because we don't have a motion to add six, so. Yeah, Molly's raising her hand, she can't make a motion or second motion because she's not here, right? So I'll go ahead and comment. So we'll work on this again. Go ahead, Molly.
Oh, I I just want to know, does the chief have a problem with your, the plan that we were originally, that long range planning approved?
She did, she was the closures of all the access points to six avenue and twelve Chase.
You know, whatever the residents want to do, we'll live with. I mean, there's always a concern whenever we change any change any traffic pattern, but we'll have to figure that out as we go.
The, since you said that any issues that come from a resident initiated decision again, they'll get through whether it's working with the trucks as far as ways for emergency management. It's just allowing us the time to give them a heads up and also residents, because we are impacting their daily travel. Is that your question, Molly?
Yes, thank you.
All right, yeah, all right.
Add six. That direction?
Yeah, we'll have the roses drawn for the July of twelve, kind of town council.
All right.
And at this time right now for the June twenty eighth. Sorry, uh, June twenty eighth, currently don't have a, the, uh, the discussion. So I'll keep it open if the case.
Okay. Um, is there a way to look into, we're going to run the issue on that intersection?
Yeah, we'll talk again. There's not an interesting for the general approval.
Right, because it's just by it, but we'll work with them. If you understand the picture we have there.
Right.
All right, back to old business. I just wanted to put it in together, incorporate in the part we have.
There's only one reason I don't invest the Z twenty two dash seven or one zero system that's like an avenue. The pool variance to be.
I'm ready to present this.
Right, good question, sir. Yeah, right, good question, you're kind of a good candidate. So as this was said, this is a variance request in sixty nine, what this variance is for, they have a decent pool for residents, it's going for some repairs to correct it, to deal with some issues related to code. I'm concerned with it. The request initially came in at five feet, but the contractors were deceiving with us, the contractor actually said, well, the new board needed to do just a two foot variance. So they did amend the variance to ask to have at forty eight feet as opposed to fifty. And what they will be doing, basically, will be a small pool at the outside of the pool, it's probably some stairs. The building board, the new board did recommend approvals of this at forty eight feet, so they do recommend approval and they, it wasn't even a recommendation. I'm happy to ask you questions, if there's any questions.
Any questions?
All set.
All right. Motion, what was presented by Councilperson David, second, Lynn Martini, and then the, uh, Councilperson Marty.
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion passes. Minutes, we got a minute for questions. Council on May ten, one point two, and Councilor David on May six. Motion by Councilperson David, second by Councilperson David. And, uh, I agree with you, the end of Councilperson David.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Now we're down to other considerations, the fifty foot water setback requirement, we'll just discuss it. Mr. Formularian?
Yes, sir, thank you. As as the council may recall, that is a discussion I had here for two meetings and for a few months. Had you asked me, you did ask me a couple more with the city of Winter Park, to get more information about what processes and requirements and related to this issue. So I did reach out to the city of Winter Park, did speak with Mr. Briggs, who is the planning and transportation director, to find out more about how the process works. So I'll go through that quickly. Basically, in Winter Park, it's very different. They have absolutely more intensive process, and why I say that is, in their code and in the requirements, any development on the waterfront has to go and get approved by the planning zoning board. There is an exception for rules that are under certain sides, but by and large, nothing falls under that. So everything that's on a lake or canal in the city of Winter Park goes in front of the planning zoning board. The process that they have though is not a variance, it's actually days, they review an approval process. The way their code is established, they have a section that has a purpose and intent of how they want to protect the waterfront. And that's what the planning zoning board in Winter Park is reviewing these applications against. Basically, their standards are very similar to what we have here in Towne, Winter Park. There's some conditions that they do that we don't have, that's over here in the moment. But basically, it's it's it's, they're looking for that, the pools or improvements don't have significant grade changes. I will tell you, one of the big concerns that Mr. Briggs said, told me that they have in Winter Park, is a concern that they get pools that want to come in very high above grade that was causing issues with the UCHAs. So that's why they have that specific condition related to that, because that wasn't the problem that they were having.
I'm sorry, they were having problems?
Problem, people were, what Mr. Briggs said, they're putting their pools like nine feet ten to the above grade. They can't do that anymore in Winter Park, but that's why they put that in the session, that they can't do that. They're basically limited to three feet above grade.
If if the issue that was causing is what?
It was, it was blocking UCHAs and neighbors and things like that, that's why they they have that issue there. Concerned of their other concerns they look at, it's one offs, one one run offs, same as we did here, they actually have the same standard, it's the first inch of runoff of their own park. They also do take a consideration of using neighbors, they just say. And the other part that they they have is to say, is they encourage or require preservation of existing trees within that area. Also to encourage the preservation of existing native habitat, you know, those kinds of things. The other part is they also look at screening the view from the water body onto the property of its pool, the house, truck, whatever it is, they also look for that type of screening. So those are the other pieces of what they do. The interesting part that I found was, I'm not going into this, there are very specific standard definitions, there are not. It very much is a general standard, even on our stormwater, we are much more specific here in Winter, there, than they are. Their standard is, we just do the first inch, and if we think it even signed, we'll let you know, type of thing. So it's a very kind of, it it's, what Mr. Briggs said to me is, their board does it on case by cases. They look at it, say, does this make sense, does it meet the fat purpose and intent statement that they have in the city of Winter Park? So again, that the process is very different with that, and that includes the pools, because the pools are within that process. Specifically to pools in Winter Park, they're the same as we are here in Towne, Winter Park, fifty feet of properties. They do have a provision that also says, consistent with properties of one hundred feet around you, so they basically, next you have greater than fifty feet, and you can be more than fifty feet, that's what your neighbors are. So you can never be less than fifty. The one exception to the fifty, as as we've previously stated, they do have a provision in their code that says for properties that are on canals and have seawall, they're able to go to twenty five feet. And I apologize, my memory was last season's point, it's actually twenty five. They would be allowed to go to twenty five feet with the approval of the planning zoning board, as well as those conditions related to the the elevation from more than three feet above grade, and some other. And and all the other conditions that are generally required. So that is within their code. However, when I spoke with Mr. Briggs about this, the important context to this is in the city of Winter Park, they really never have, it hasn't been an issue. He can recall one coming through, I went through their minutes for about three years, they never, they don't come up, they said it's not an issue. So what he told me in Winter Park, they have very few properties on canals, the ones that are there, most of them already have pools, and most of those pools are already at fifty feet. So he said, it's really not an issue that they ever come across a path, but it is, it is within their code. In terms of seawalls, I know that was a question you had specifically, they are also different than seawalls. Well, Winter Park, the way their pool is structured, they actually discourage seawalls. They they don't, basically, for seawall in Winter Park, first you have to show that there's an erosion concern problem. You have to show that, and that's why you're doing it. The other big difference between us and what they do is, on lakes, they do not allow vertical seawalls, they only allow ripracks, this whole thing ripracks. They only allow riprap, this whole thing riprap. That's, that's their preference. They do allow vertical seawalls on canals, they do allow them on canals. And the reason for that is, and, and when you read through their code, that purpose and intent, they are very focused on preserving the natural water level. That's, that's why they have those different standards that, that we don't have here. So again, it's a different kind of structure that they have there in the city of Winter Park. Um, but in terms of their standards, again, they, they have several that are similar to us here. Again, like I said, they have the same setback that we do. They have the same one-inch, um, stormwater retention requirement that we do. And also the limitation on, um, caning potion weapons, we have that same limitation. So we have similarities to what they have. And then, and like I said, also, yeah, the stormwater, we're actually more, more regimented than they are, related to the stormwater. But there are differences, you know, but, but again, the planning zone review of all waterfront elements, not just, all waterfront elements. Um, also they look at, you know, the, the view shed surrounding property owners, is it, is they look at these issues with pools as well as those structures. Um, they also require the screening of, you know, retaining all schools, they require the screening to, to the view from the lake. Also protection of the trees and native habitats, um, and then they do allow that as a setback. But the other important part of this as well is that those standards that the city of Winter Park has are minimum standards. This was something that they very much stressed to me. The planning zoning board there, when they do these reviews, they have the ability to apply greater and more stringent standards of what their code actually sets. As long as the intent is to meet that purpose and intent. So even though, an example would be, that's twenty-five foot setback, even if it means those limitations or conditions, this, that, in the city of Winter Park, the planning zoning board can still say that would be even more because of this, because of the impact and, um, intent. So that's their structure. The other part that they have that we don't have here, we also have the rate, lake and water rates by separate. Um, what I learned about that board is that board does not get into the world of permitting of pools and structures. They deal with docks and lake management and things like that. However, where they do cross worlds is when there's a variance related to the lake setbacks. So whether it's a fifty-foot setback or the twenty-five-foot setback. Whenever there's an active variance request, then that does go to the lake and water division board, but the recommendation, that recommendation then goes to the planning zoning board. And in that jurisdiction, they actually make a decision on variances. Their variance becomes their standard, just similar to ours, because that's a pretty standard thing throughout the state of Florida. Um, so they, they just have a different process. So with all that said, that's what they do. Um, in terms of maybe just kind of going back quickly to the bigger picture of everything. Um, as y'all know, we're at the fifty feet, again, I'm gonna say again, it's important that we have not had this issue come up too often in the last seven years, I mean, actually, tonight, after six, in, in seven years. And then we had the two pending that are out there. Um, so it truly, there's not a, a large concern with this throughout the town. But there absolutely are areas in the town that this is a concern, because we have areas that have restricted that, um, between, um, properties and lakes. So that is important. Um, the other thing, again, just for everybody to keep in our minds is that, yes, we're part of the, you know, the brother chain of lakes, we're not saying for the waters, we're protecting. We do have recommendations from, from D P D, um, from D P D, and also from Amy with office spending related to salt. But I will say, my last discussion I had with Amy related to salt was, if the town council doesn't want to review this standard, her recommendation is, and, and the town attorney has recommended this as well, that the town require a full harness with, with that property. So if there's a problem, if there's a concern, the town is perfectly, and that's responsible. So she did say she would support that, if that's what the town decided to do, that would be her recommendation related to that. Um, so those are the, those are the issues that are out there. In terms of options that you all have, again, the option is one, keep it as it is at the fifty feet. Um, now, a path for properties that can't meet that, so the variance process is always available, that's always available. The important thing though, when folks go through that process is, and, uh, to present it in the way that shows there's a hardship related to the property. And that would be justification. In terms of the review by the development people board and by the local town council, is looking at what kind of mitigation do they provide related to that reduction if the variance was either approved. So there is, even if you keep the fifty-foot as it is today, people still have the ability to go through the variance process and demonstrate that there's a hardship related to land, the way the property is configured. And that their project is not excessive, and it doesn't cause negative effects. So that process is there. Again, if you want to change it, there's many different paths you can take, it's really their discretion which way you would like to go. Um, in terms of a path that I would recommend based on everything I've learned in the last couple of months. If you were to look to change it, um, would go to something similar to, it's kind of a hybrid between Orange County and Winter Park. Um, go to a thirty-five foot on canal front properties, which, where we match Orange County, we're going to, that's the standard, we're setback in town when in there. So it would be the same with canal front properties. Um, but then also where you went to Park, where we talked about, they have to have the seawall, they have to protect the trees, they, you know, have to protect the native trees. I would even bring in, you know, only approach it with a hundred-foot plate, things like that, that, that would provide that additional protection. And I would also suggest bringing in, because we have some properties actually just on the other side of our range, we're crossing eleven and nineteen main, where they have even more restricted depths on the lake. And maybe consider something that is, your lot was planted prior to, let's say, nineteen seventy-five, which we already have in the code, the lake to respecting lots. That, and you have a less than a hundred fifty, fifty feet depth, same kind of ability to, as long as you go to thirty-five feet, you have these other environmental protections. That could be an option. That is just an option consideration. Um, again, there's many other ways you could do it if you would want to reduce it. Or keep it as you have it today and just continue to rely on the variance process to look and make sure that it's our appropriate request. So with that, that is my presentation to you this evening, but happy to answer questions.
Just a quick question for that. So you said that, uh, Winter Park, the park, there's four, may, when it's like that, so.
Right.
You get into specifics of what that.
Yes.
Was, was it more retained change on their land or over the one-inch, uh, under your form?
Right. Uh, no, sir, actually, it was just, it was much more, it, it wasn't, um, so moving on. So no, no, it, it isn't. What it is, and this is why it's interesting, one part, it's really to go, to get to that twenty-five foot on the canal front lots. It's really tied to the elevation of that, of that pool, it limits that height. So in terms of the one-inch stormwater, that's the same, um, all the other environmental parts are the same. So there really aren't a lot on top of it when they allow us to canal front. It does require a seawall there for this to happen, so that is something that's different. But no, in terms of like the design of the seawall and design of the stormwater, there's no difference if it's a twenty-five on a canal versus somewhere else.
Then they haven't. They haven't had.
But actually, they haven't had that process come through, they haven't, they haven't started with it.
I, I, I like the required range. I do like the protection of trees, I like our one-inch, I like our one-inch runoff requirement. I like our requirement for seawall. Um, I like Orange County's thirty-five foot setback. So I, I think, you know, we can hollapart this a bit, you know, you went through what your recommendation was for this, I, I, I liked most of it. Um, you know, I didn't really like this, the variance process up to that point. Because right now, the reason we're in this situation is, is the development review board isn't authorized to go below that. You know, there's no review, engineer review process for that. So I don't know if we put a stipulation that a thirty-five or fifty, that, you know, engineer review needs to occur, and a due to harm clause needs to happen. Because I think what we're really at is where things, canal lots, um, where the engineering communication needs to occur. Lakefront, I think we're okay, I don't care if you have any, any, you know, large-scale variance requests.
We only actually have one, one for a new pool on the lake, and that one was denied. And I will say, that particular date, they came back and designed a pool to meet fifty-foot setback, the pool they built is very small, but at least it's a fee.
So it's, you know, it's primarily an Olympic talent, we're trying to solve for that, you know, so. I would propose that we do as you suggested to thirty-five feet. I think that gets us to where we need to be with the two, uh, pending variances, um, with the seawall requirement, with the one-inch stormwater protection requirement.
Yeah, it would be, um, so, so in Winter Park, it's maintaining the native trees, trees that are there, you can't take those out, um, no improvement to the hundred-foot flood, that's very helpful. So I think if, if, what I hear, uh, Councilman David, but if the board agrees, you know, if we can develop awareness based on the standards and the patent rights. Um, what I hear is for over the canal front lots, it's what I'm hearing.
Okay, then what if you come, repairing itself to thirty-five feet now? That's kind of a slippery slope, is where, where, where are we gonna get in? How far?
Versus the, you're repairing. They still have to show that.
But what's the difference between it, than needing it at fifty feet or than needing it at thirty-five feet? If, if they're gonna get a variance anyways?
They're so, they're so vulnerable that now it is, it's not possible to have.
Yeah, I think for the definition, the variance requires a hardship. If, this could be an exception to the, not an exception, but just an add-on, it's to the current end of the code standard that says if you're a canal front lot. Then you have the ability to go into that fifty feet with a maximum of thirty-five feet, um, without crossing that threshold of the variance. But you still have to, um, have the seawall, one-inch, well harmless, uh, tree protection, so and so, et cetera. Councilman David?
Okay, my concern is, okay, they can't beat the thirty-five feet either. Then we're back to it.
Then there don't need a variance in the.
That, they want to.
Yes, because they can't.
You assume that they would turn that.
Well, they'd be held to that hardship.
There, there have to come down to. Is anything different about the property that makes the application not every single application?
Correct. My understanding.
Maybe a question, you mentioned that the owner would have to agree with the town and have to sign something with that, also be extended to whoever they sell them to.
If they want to win.
Okay. Yeah, so, so going back to that, uh, I'm thinking in terms of our downtown master plan that we did twenty years ago, and just finally used. Um, I think, is, is it possible, we're not talking about a whole lot of properties here, is it possible that, like we did with the downtown master plan, is to pre-identify those properties and designate them as such? Here's your future possible use as far as setbacks go. And, and therefore, say, you know, if this canal lot is designated as a thirty-five foot setback, you don't get the option to ask for a variance. It's a good, it's built in, and you don't get to ask for thirty-two feet, or twenty-eight feet, or whatever, you know, whatever the number is. Is it possible to do that? Um, like we did with the downtown master plan, to specify, you know, those kind of things?
Yeah, basically, that's what we're gonna be doing is the code structure, because of the change in saying, someone applies a lakefront lot, so in that case, you are gonna apply specifically the lots that they are there. In terms of whether or not they could ask for variance, not, I would actually leave that to the attorney. Because I, I, my gut reaction, I don't know that you can tell somebody you can't ask for the variance.
Probably didn't, you know, probably, you know, relenting fifteen feet on our standard variance that applies to everyone else in town. And we're identifying these properties as extensions because they're too small, or, you know, they don't have backyard, and, and they are, you know, uh, they're designated as being able to use that thirty-five foot setback option. I would think, you know, that we could say, you don't have the option to request further because of, I don't know if that's possible, but that's something I would. Heard that in there, if we were to go this route, you know, identify which properties would qualify upfront. I don't know if that's even possible, or too much work, or whatever, but, uh, on another note, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm definitely all for, uh, maintaining trees. And what about properties that, all the trees were already taken out? Since the trees get put in as part of the package. And also, um, as far as seawalls in Orange County, doesn't Orange County require riprap? Or sea, for new seawalls now?
It's part of the seawall construction.
Okay, that's what I thought, so, so they have, anybody who puts in a seawall, they have to do both, I guess.
Right.
You didn't have to?
So, um, we just did our.
I'm sorry, I, I think we have to, uh, uh, we'll come.
Yeah, I mean, there's the standard seawall construction part, I mean, the riprap discussion in Winter Park is that's all they want, they don't want to see the.
For the lakes, not in.
For the lakes, not in the house. Now they allow, like, we could, here in town, the vertical seawalls.
I would insist on your seawall requirement. How far parties only, and the purpose of the riprap on the lakefront seawall is.
Right, I think it has a visual, uh, aspect to it.
But I mean, particularly if you can, where you actually propose passing things like that.
Correct. Um, along this, when we're talking about canals, we, I think we've kind of needed to identify because most people don't realize there's a second canal. Uh, that comes off of Lake Dam, that's only got three or four houses on it, it's not very long, and it's part of the lake. And defining that between some other codes, that, sorry, other house and we did.
Yep.
But you know what I'm talking about, the short canal. Uh, but also defining that because we have several codes that are on, that are tied. And are, about that, because how close the size of the code are, they're like, now, not for the park.
Or if I made my next amendment or match.
I think it's.
Yeah.
Right, like I worked. I mean, it's, you know, you don't wanna, can't work. I think it needs to be specific. Now, or fronts, uh, I think there are, I think it would make you prove, type of, by the property.
Yeah.
I mean, it would be really stupid.
And we can actually do that as part of your, it's really a map that shows what properties fall under that definition of canal.
Is most of it's lot size, wouldn't you say?
That's a different, different.
That's a big difference, is lots, but sizes are super small.
Right.
Okay.
So as far as Councilman David's suggestion about engineer. Would those, um, lots qualify for a thirty-five foot exception? Would they automatically be required to have engineering involved as well, or would that have to go back to a separate, uh, review?
Actually, your code, I would, I would require the engine. So when any pool comes in here in town when in there, they're required to provide an engineered stormwater, that's required. If they're putting in a seawall, it has to be engineered, because it goes down on the rest, it goes stormwater protection. So the engineering component of the seawall and retention, we already have that in the town, it wouldn't be anything.
Yeah, originally, engineer, I was discussing, with stormwater retention, will be part of that, that covered, uh, part of the stormwater.
Right, and the stormwater has to be captured, not just for the residents, but if the pool goes in, that the pool surface area has to be, what are those calculations?
Well, no, currently, it's, it's the one-inch. Well, no, currently it's, it's the one-inch, one-inch gap to the rock. But that's, I think, where the whole harmless comes in. If there's a catastrophic failure, that whole harmless then will protect or something. I, I don't know feasibility of designing a stormwater system on a jumps of the small lots and shallow to get enough capacity within the system to handle an entire pool.
So that may be a deal killer for some of these folks, even if they do get a thirty-five-foot extension.
Right.
Okay.
We're going to need an emergency. Are we going to worry?
We will have an ordinance coming back to you. I think the only clarification I need would be, is would the process be that the land development code would allow to go to D R V, then town councils, and most of the variances? Because we still have that third party review kind of thing? I'm not sure how that would affect.
Would you structure it where it's just a permitted use as long as any of the requirements cannot require an additional review by D R V over time? Unless they then ask for variance again, then it comes to the process cycle.
Okay.
Yes, even if the third class for variance, like properties, variance requirement, it would go to the D R V.
Gotcha. Mr. Lynn?
Just wanted to ask for clarification. Right, we mentioned that.
Who went, nineteen minutes?
Thank you.
Just asked for clarification. You had mentioned that, I, I thought there were different, a setback requirement per the size of the lot in Orange County code. That it wouldn't set at thirty-five, it's like a, a different, smaller lot.
Well, it's, yeah, I mean, in Orange County, where it's different, Orange County has many, many zone districts. We have one zone district for residential in town. So, yeah, so Orange County, that number changed, so it's a zone district, bigger marker. So, yeah, we don't have that. We have the one district where everybody's thirty-five feet.
And I think, yeah, I guess properties fall into that category of Orange Counties as well.
Yes, probably, maybe, and all A A, which is the thirty-five first, that is right.
So I, I just recommend that we set the canal front property since the thirty-five setback.
As long as there's common consent by the board, we can go ahead and drop the ordinance and have it for first reading in July and then second, final public hearing in August.
Oh, we'll have to go to the.
Oh, yeah, sorry. We have to go to confront D R Vs. The earliest I can get you in for first reading would be August, second reading in September.
So keep in mind, D R V unanimously denied changing the ordinance. However, if we're talking about specific properties that are pre-identified as being in our, moving to this exception, and we have to make clear that we're talking about just those properties. Not, you know, not a setback change across.
To be clear, D R V voted against the variance to the existing ordinance, this is what it's changed.
No, they voted against the, the consideration of reducing the setback at all from fifty feet. In, in addition to the variance request, they did not. But the, the, the original variance request was not unanimously denied. But the request to reduce the setback across the board was denied. And I think they, you know, I don't want to speak to them. I think they were thinking in terms of the entire county, like all the existing properties. So this is like, slightly different.
Yeah, also, and also bringing on this additional condition, which is not something that's spoke about either. So between limiting and sacrificing, I'll bring on those other requirements of environmental protection may be good for them to see.
Correct.
I think we should get direction to staff to look at.
Yeah, we can add additional departments that if needed or if we do a little research. But my concern is, is overbuilding, you know, properties, creating, you know, drainage problems or.
I, I agree with you. That's why I would target this back to properties.
Whoever created something.
You're talking about, what we're not changing though is that forty-five percent maximum penetration. So what happens on smaller properties, even though they may be able with the thirty-five, their square footage of their pool still may be getting space on that forty-five percent.
That's a fair amount of variance to make.
But that could be a variance, right? They, they have to go through the process, it's a hardship. But I, but I'm saying that's a hard hardship to show.
Correct.
That was a tough question. So I'm, I'm actually one of the canal fronts. I, I'm actually in a clean exhibition.
Yeah, I'm fine if we can, you know, draft the ordinance that we all agree with. Limiting to properties that are, you know, unable to achieve, you know, putting a, a pool, we're just talking about pool, not structure. Thanks. If we can limit, you know, those types of properties that are identified, then.
I'm good with it also. Is that good enough for you, Mark?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Thank you, Bruce. For every show.
Thanks a lot, Robert.
Thank you.
All right. S G crosswalk.
This is a crosswalk from your soundsy events. This is an annual donation from the Ron Dine. That the allocations were discussed in our downtown Long Beach plan. With this one at Sanci opinion number one on the list. So the recommendation for approval of eighty thousand seven hundred dollars for the purchase of the new crosswalk.
Just to clarify, Robert, this is the existing crosswalk. We're just adding flash lights.
Yes. Yes.
So if you get the same location, add in the lights, Heather, sorry. Discussion. Question?
I was at the Long Beach plan where we discussed this.
Motion over, second. First, you may, Councilor Martin, second, uh, Councilor Cindy Abbott. And vote to begin with, Councilor Cindy.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes. He has one property swap.
Yes, sir. As a last time council meeting, maybe in a very occasion, with this society meeting. I think in front row, mind you, while everybody else is gone. As you remember at the last time council meeting, the town council consented to the swap in discussion. But the one caveat was making sure the neighbors were aware that five feet along the south side of Eighth Avenue, we did hold that public meeting, noticed everybody was in five hundred feet. And we didn't have any objections to that property swap. And again, there'd be five feet to the southern portion of Eighth Avenue, adjacent to their property. And twenty feet to the east of their property, and we gained entire interest in the railroad right of there. Actually, by doing this, we have more interest in the swap south of the city, so it's positive that we did that.
You have a motion?
Yeah, motion over.
Second.
Motion by Councilor Cindy Abbott, second by Councilor Cindy.
We're going to.
And. So we begin, Councilor Martin.
Aye.
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 Motion does.
Thank you for being so patient. We're going to have a reunion tomorrow and I'll be taking reports.
I feel left out, don't you? Taking on reports.
Every person making, uh, uh, as a departmentary of this. So person rights voted in May to extend their committee, hope we found out since, but they can't technically without an ordinance change. So, um, not quite sure how to retract that in therapy. But I think that was the biggest question, if, but I think more or less the question, she doesn't think any of the members will want to be, well, not, they want to be voting members, I guess.
Yeah, the, the issue that has been raised in H P B and P N R, they both want to expand their membership to voting members. But it's in the only code that it's restricted to seven members only per each individual committee. So we'd have to change our ordinance to allow them to go up to a certain number as determined by the committee, which could be nine. Again, I consider increasing the number of committee members and increasing your forum requirements. You know, sometimes, well, I believe with P N R, they believe that, okay, well, if we have, you know, the way we were trying to resolve this was you can have as many subcommittees as you want, with as many members of that subcommittee as you want. They just don't have a vote when it comes to allocation funds or, or stuff like that. But I guess in order of saying that, they'll feel as if they are part of the team, if they're not a voting member. So it's up to the council if you want us to give or change the, the code to allow for boards and committees to go up to and not exceed nine members.
And the argument is, well, I think it's, it was fair. It's just so hard to manage seven, doing all the candy of the event. So she felt like adding more people to the team, and the voting committee would, would take away some of the responsibility and spread out some further. So, um, I support it, but I, you know, I didn't realize it was huge, so that's.
Yeah, H P B is coming from a whole different direction. We've got two active members that they're out of town four months of the year. So they zoom all, then we didn't have more. We actually were short every time because of it.
Are they willing to be ex officio or voting terms?
Ex, ex officio is where the members of the non-voting members. It's usually, you're, you're sitting on the bench until you're called up to, you know, to get onto the team.
Yet then now that I've, I've got some extra people signing up, that we could probably do that. Yeah, any heard feelings?
What the pressure is.
I'm, I'm fine.
Those physical, pardon, sorry, those towns have a pressure department, they do not, so it just all on.
You guys have a lot going on. That's surprising. Yes, I guess, as I'm sitting here, we want to, um, when it gives us a, a range, so not less than seven, not more than eleven.
Yeah, as Councilor Ramesh just said, we can usually go to the board, they can use discretion as a fluctuation. Because again, you know, P N R may be ten, eleven, twelve, and H P B might have only five. Can we, can we do a minimum at, make sure there's a minimum? Because that's where I see where H P B at one time, we were, they were struggling to keep numbers. And we don't want it to wrinkle down to three, to making decisions. You know, that would be my only thing is up to their discretion, but having a minimum number in there, whether it's five or eleven or seven.
You can definitely do that, but what if you can't determine the number? I'm just concerned that your business might not be done.
Well, I'm more concerned with the making decisions. You know, with limited factors. And if they don't have it, they don't have it, then they're, they need to start recruiting. I think there definitely needs to be a minimum, because we've run into this before where committees met, there may be seven or eight or nine at the time, but only four showed up to vote. Well, five was there, one was excused. So that's where the problem gets you, is, is we get into such a small number and some of these guys are making big decisions without enough access. So I, I'm good with raising it, but I think if that was set.
So is it five or is it seven?
I'm okay with just seven. I think five is good.
I think seven only because five, four. Three might find people with their own points.
I'm good with seven. Wait, how many should we worry about right now? I was going to give a few ways, and I go, no, I love. We only have five.
Five.
I just might need to more than two.
Would it be five with a vacancy of two? I mean, yeah, they could be, yeah.
Do all these, do all these boards actually take action or are they?
They're all recommendations.
They're minimum now?
So if the boards may raise an engagement, that means you have a minimum of five individuals or four or three. The council still has the ultimate authority. It just, I just see in a lot of other little small towns that sometimes it's hard to get.
Seven.
Yeah, that's, that's a big number.
I'm agreeable.
The rock bottom spot.
Rock bottom spot.
That works.
Not more than one.
You have your liaison?
I don't have a liaison. West, I was asking for liaison. Probably still on.
Oh, yes, she is.
Yeah, there was some, I got a request to reach out to be able to look at a potential crosswalk here at Sixth and Oakdale, because there's no good place to, for a crosswalk, so a potential relocation of that, probably prioritized for the. Out by, uh, crossing there and then one down Main Street between.
There's a mid-block between nine and ten.
The major plan, the major proposal was to move that to one intersection with the other. So just to remind you, parties and. Six and Oakdale.
And I think we were discussing with the five-month block development, that crosswalk being located over there.
Yeah, I knew, I knew, but yeah, I haven't seen that developed.
Yeah, the requirement, and that's part of the requirement of the conditions is they have to participate in the funding that.
And they're in the process of setting up both the town councils workshop, which they're kind of also.
Do they have a date for that, or are we, we have not, back from them on the, the treaty?
We're, we're waiting for this development to come back.
Okay.
I, I can, I did speak with them this morning. They are finishing up the revisions based on the report. They said they were having a final meeting with staff of goods, finding lives or revisions based on the report. They're also finishing out all their renderings of the buildings as well as the rendering of all landscaping, as we requested. I think we, I should get those from them. They said by the end of the week. And I just want to get those to.
So they, they, we're supposed to provide a new list of the treaties that I've received, so can you prompt?
Yeah, I should, I should.
Provide that. Not that anybody's going to be in town till the end of June. Everybody's out of town till July, so I hope they're not buying anything soon.
All right, staff reports, Robert?
Um, as you said, we're busy, June, July, two fifteenth, against on, uh, on sixteen to the twenty-sixth, we'll be on vacation. So the time in charge of the admin issues, and Chief will be in charge of the issues on June twenty-fourth with food trucks. June twenty-fifth, we have the summer bash. June twenty-eighth, again, we have a workshop to, to be determined on whether if we're going to need it or if there's a subject matter that we can potentially discuss. July, we'll be making breakfast. And then July seventh, we start. seventh, we start our first of three public meetings relative to the Way Street, uh, park issues, and then again, on July eleventh, we have the ward show ninety percent workshop, so workshops and meetings are really nice, all great, so, gee, now, you're still welcome. Um, still working on the, this year's twenty-two, twenty-three, um, budget, uh, the amount of projects that we have currently in offer, most of the agency P grants, um, are probably going to fit into our reserves, which is not a bad thing, uh, that's the reason we build reserves is, um, you know, you have the savings accounts to dip into when you need it to fund these projects, and that's pretty much what we're gonna have to do next just for years to do our payback, uh, to pay for some of these large projects, uh, including, I don't know, limited to the best of all, or the second avenue, the multi-door approach, uh, so we're, I'll have that probably tightened up by the end of, uh, June, and we'll set up the meetings sometime in July, for the workshop and then the hearings in September. And again, the agency P grants, we're still working on a DDM, uh, waiting for them to release those, unless they do release those, and we're, um, gonna move forward with the construction drawings and bidding those projects out.
All right, well, good. Very nice, we got it.
I swear, I have nothing, thank you.
I hope not. I'll look for it.
Good evening, um, the Lake Butler paving has been, been going forward, um, I've had to be out there a couple of times, deal with a few residents on things, we've been able to smooth those over and move forward, so that's going well. Um, we saved up the citrus trees at the old schoolhouse, we were able to reuse some plastic piping, place that around the trunks of the trees, protect them from the weed whacking that's happening. Um, we've been raking mulch away from the trees around town hall and the new facilities, we felt the mulch was a little thick around the trunks of those trees, we wanted to get them to breathe, doing a lot of line of sight trimming throughout town in the last couple of weeks, prep the ball field parking lot area, because they'll be paving that, grooming and grading of the roads, cleaned up the drains after the storms, cleaned the outfall at Ridgewood, um, we're looking to repair the west side of Sixth, the brick area, so we're waiting for a quote on that, we're working on final markings of sidewalks for repairs there, so we can get a plan out and get that moving along, we've added bubblers at the trees at Palmer Park for irrigation, painting at town hall, we had to fix the mainline irrigation at town hall as well, also had to repair, and we did this in-house, I'm really proud of the guys, they were able to fix the water line going into the library that, that burst and created some flooding there, so great job for them to do that in-house, fixed the brick areas on Brick Main in the town square, um, adding millings at the Fifth Avenue parking lot, we've also done some vegetation management around the volleyball court and the brick paving around our new town facilities, made some minor repair issues for the Lake Butler paving project that we went out and handled ourselves, filled potholes at Sixth and Main Street, did a split rail, um, installation at the island at Windermere Recreation Center, um, did an inventory of the playground mulch, because we're gonna start, um, refilling that, and then we met with Bright Future to get a better idea for town hall for the food truck nights, make sure that we have enough power around here, as well as for the Orlando Philharmonic, that food, that Wine and Dine is working to bring to town. That's all I have.
Uh, we had three openings, uh, to PD, I'd say one opening at PD, but we're just paying a few more, if you haven't been notified already, I've got the chief treble, I've put in her estimation, she'll be resigning in, uh, August, which will be thirty-four years of service, and also be taken as an Allen, so we'll be losing two people at one time, that'll be a big hit for us, I've been through about, uh, nine out of eleven applicants so far, I turned nine of them down, we've got a couple in the queue left, so we're trying to kind of push forward, going out to the academies, going to the night academies and trying to get some more applicants, and it's a, it's a tough right now, we, we usually lose about one person every year and a half, so we haven't had an issue, and this isn't an issue, but, uh, you know, people retire, so we're kind of all being hit at one time, so it's a, it's a little bit tough. Uh, several memorials last month, uh, with a couple range training days, uh, we've already updated our power DMS policy, because we are setting up right now for a mock assessment, which will be in July, um, so we're getting all that ready, we're also doing testing, supervisory testing, uh, because with that, uh, commensurate to the people retiring, there's gonna be opportunities, succession planning will be taking place, uh, individuals will be moving up, and then based on the testing, whoever comes in first will be promoted to the next sergeant position, so it's a good time for our officers here to, um, finally see succession plan come to fruition after almost ten years, it's a good opportunity for some of these guys inside. Um, Carlos, the SRO, actually will be going to the detective slot, he does, does have some experience in the past, John will be staying on as a reserve, so that'll be helpful for that position, um, we did have, uh, officer Ogletree get, get the SRO position, we'll be sending him to school, but I will let you know, if you want to have any private conversations, tell me tomorrow, but I, we're in the middle of SRO contracts, um, I would really love to make some comments when we have our, our earlier speaker today, but I refrain from that, um, since Orange County's caving in, so both reverse SRO contracts, uh, in all central Florida, um, so we're in the middle of that negotiation, and, um, um, Orange County Public School does have law enforcement, uh, they do have a self-person, law enforcement team, um, so, again, on the individu, you want to know some of my strategy on that, but, uh, we are looking to hire people first, before we can replace that SRO position.
Right. Excuse me, Chief, do you have two applicants for sergeant?
We do, we have, uh, just one on and Ryan Miller.
And, uh, let's see, so any potential for avoiding from within for deputy chief, looking outside of that?
Uh, we are looking to promote them, we're there.
We are?
Yes.
It would create an additional sergeant position if both can qualify, or just?
That would be the sergeant's position that we're, what we're planning to.
Got you out there, thank you. Mr. Coach.
I attended the, um, Florida, we, the Florida Records Management, um, conference that we certify, and they are opening up the certified records managing testing, someone's going to the course and get the certified records management certification.
Wonder.
Certification.
Great.
Maybe teaching.
Excuse me?
Why would you teach?
I'm gonna hold some.
Any other comments?
Um, just, uh, comment about Memorial Day celebration, uh, whether you call the jobs, that, that circuit, so. Great, great. Well, definitely, didn't have a seat the place a week before, but overall great event, uh, who goes to the secret ads, they were here in force, um, we had a couple of the junior ROTC cadets drop out due to the heat, where their, uh, secret ads separated.
Seamless.
It was a joint, yeah, joint operation, which is always good, so, uh, just sort of say good.
I understand. The young man playing tax was here tonight, the, uh, I forget his name, it was, yeah, two people playing taxes. Uh, in events, Chief, you have, uh, we have the, uh, summer time, pardon?
Uh, summer bash is coming up, June twenty-fifth, four to eight P M, so we still look for some volunteers if you're available, um, I think we're pretty much getting all our district set up, what's that?
So I'll be on the sound, sorry.
How's that? So if you have, um, yeah, if you're available that night, we could use some people who are, uh, man the booths and different things like that, secret ads will be here, we are getting a lot of volunteers in, so it's usually a fun event.
That should be.
Awesome.
It's awesome.
They'll probably be tired.
All right, so, uh, what days are you gonna go, so we get a summoning, who probably's gonna win today, the entire time you're gone?
Don't you?
Twenty-eight.
Okay, we can do that. All right, fifth one, any other comments, and, uh, this meeting's adjourned, and now.